Okay, good to go, Lynn. Okay, super. Good evening. This is the Tuesday, June twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. This is a hybrid meeting, so Lynn, if you would kindly tell everyone how you're going to run the meeting, please.
Um, so there are people in the room, people virtually, and when it comes time to take comment from applicants or from people that want to speak on an application, we'll take those people in the room first and then those on Zoom. If you're not a member of the commission or you're not presenting, please keep your video off.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lynn. We'll do the roll call. John Goodwin, I am here. Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Dan Radman is absent. John Chris.
Here.
Clarence Scornia.
Here.
Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Arthur Cassavan is absent. John Engel.
Here.
Chris Herring is absent. James Bash.
Here.
Paul Knag.
We can see him on Zoom.
He's driving.
Paul?
Hello?
Was that Paul?
Yeah.
Okay, Paul Knag is here. Okay, uh, Mr. Bash, you are seated for Mr. Radman, and Mr. Knag, you are seated for Mr. Cassavant. Uh, the first two, um, applications will hear in regular meeting, meaning we will not be taking public input tonight on those two specific, um, uh, CGS eight twenty fours. So item number one, CGA CGS eight twenty-four review from Tiger Man, Director of Public Works Department for request to lease the Playhouse Theater at eighty-nine Elm Street. Mr. Mann.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, good evening. Um, so as mentioned, we are looking for, um, an eight dash twenty-four review, um, in review of the, uh, the statute. It's no municipal agency or legislative body shall lease any municipal property or public building without it being referred to the commission for a, uh, for a review and specifically as to whether or not it it sits with the the plan of conservation and development. Uh, so the Board of Selectmen and the Department of Public Works are seeking an eight dash twenty-four review for a proposed lease of the Playhouse Theater at eighty-nine Elm Street by the Playhouse LLC. The premises will be leased as a movie theater with food and beverage sales permitted for on-premises consumption by theater patrons and as a private membership club. The agreement is for the entire building. The agreement will begin on the earlier of the date of issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the building or the estimated completion date of construction. The initial term for the lease is ten years and with two five-year extensions possible. Um, and as far as whether or not this, uh, this lease actually fits with the plan of conservation development, I think the plan is quite clear. Uh, section three and the protect physical, uh, character portion under preserve and enhance physical character. The physical character and appearance in New Canaan has been a significant factor in attracting people to New Canaan for over the years. There are many things which contribute to the overall perception of Canaan's character, including the following: a village center which is vibrant, attractive, compact, and walkable. Um, we feel that having the downtown, the theater in the downtown area will definitely make it more attractive and keep it vibrant and, uh, associated with that. We're trying to increase some walkability issues with it, as well as you can see the bump outs are being constructed, um, as we speak. And then section four, uh, the nurture of the downtown. New Canaan's downtown is a special place. New Canaan residents and visitors recognize a strong sense of place which exists in the downtown and which is unique. Residents want to preserve and enhance the overall image and character of the downtown and sure remains the heart and soul of New Canaan. Uh, I, you know, we've, we've always said that the Playhouse is at the fifty-yard line of, of, uh, the downtown, and, uh, I think that it is the heart and soul of the, of the, of the business district and the downtown itself. And then, under support downtown, consider establishing an entertainment venue. There's actually an entire paragraph on the Playhouse, which is the Playhouse in Elm Street dates nineteen twenty-three. It was privately operated for many years. It's a one-screen movie theater and was later adapted into a screen movie theater. The Playhouse was purchased by the town in two thousand and seven. The theaters are now operated by bowtie at that time during the plan, but now we'd be looking operated by Playhouse LLC. A movie theater is a great anchor, quote-unquote, for the downtown area, and it helps to attract people in the evenings and on weekends. This use should be maintained since it helps support the vibrancy and vitality of the downtown. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Mann?
Question, uh, James Bash. Hi, Tiger. Um, do we have any additional clarity on what the likely use is going to be of the second floor?
The second floor is, is as a members, uh, as a membership club, but it's open to anyone. Um, it has a small fee associated with it, uh, specifically to use for that, for birthday parties, other gatherings. Uh, there might be some special events that happen up there. But, uh, it's, uh, Kevin has mentioned, it's mostly like a Costco membership. You pay the membership, you can, uh, um, join. There's no, uh, no exclusivity to it.
Has that been finalized or is that still work in progress? They're taking input?
Uh, this pretty much finalized.
Okay.
Mr. Ward, do you have a question?
Well, I was gonna, it's similar to James's, uh, the, the mention of a private membership club. I was a bit curious as to just what that meant and what it comprises.
I think it's an area for patrons to go and, um, um, I won't use the word hang out, but, uh, you know, go and meet. Um, if they want to get away a little bit and stay there. Um, it would be open at other times, other than when the, uh, the, the theater might be showing movies. Um, but I don't, I don't think that it'd be an exclusive nature by any straight imagination. I think it would be open for all, and I would imagine that be probably attended or, or, um, the membership would probably, most New Canaanites would want to be a member, put it that way, and would, would join the membership itself.
I have a quick question. Um, would you have to join the membership to go to the movies?
No, absolutely not. Just to go to the upstairs. There's nothing, there's no, there's no correlation between either.
Is John Chris, has the, um, cost of the membership, uh, been determined? And if you have it, exactly what do you get?
No, it hasn't been determined. That, that would be, that's a, that's, that would be up to the Playhouse LLC to establish as the, as the rate for what they would want to charge for that, that club.
It's John Chris again. I understand there are already some, there are some tenants in the building at, at them, at this time. Uh, what happens to them?
Uh, we've been in contact with them since, uh, we started negotiations with, uh, with various vendors because the majority of them wanted to use the entire building. So, uh, they're aware of the, of the pending move. Uh, and we're actively trying to make, uh, arrangements to find them suitable locations elsewhere. So Earth Garden, the Chamber, um, they're aware of, um, of this happening, and we're actively trying to find other locations for them, um, to use.
One final question, the, in the street at, at grade, there are those glass-fronted look a bit like greenhouses. I guess I'm sure what term to use, but I mean, what, what's the plan for those, if any?
Those bay windows at present are going to remain. They'll be, uh, refurbished or, you know, um, made new as part of the, we have a two-phase plan as far as renovations. One is the exterior building that the town is responsible for. The, uh, and then the other is the interior. The exterior portion of the building, the design has already been let to, uh, to a landscape architect. Um, and, uh, at that point in time, we'll go forward and renovate the entire outside of the building, seal up the outside, and refurbish those, those bay windows. Um, both, uh, we are very much in favor of keeping them, as is, uh, Playhouse LLC. We, uh, cinema lab would like to see them remain.
Will the entire building be ADA accessible?
The plan is yes. The plan is to, to make, um, to put in new seating and, uh, make the grades inside the theater, uh, ADA compliant, and then add an elevator for the second floor to make the second floor compliant as well. So both floors of the, uh, of the theater will be compliant, and then new bathrooms are planned to be installed.
Thank you, Mr. Mann.
Associated with that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mann.
Thank you.
Um, commissioners, do I have a motion, um, as to whether, um, this CGS eight twenty-four is consistent or not consistent with the plan of conservation development?
I'll move that it's consistent with the plan of conservation development.
Uh, reasons, please. Mrs. Nielsen?
Um, so our P O C D talks about several things that I think are relevant. Um, the first is preserving historic resources, which this building was built in nineteen twenty-three, and I think most people in New Canaan would consider it historic resource. That's on page twenty-two. Um, the building provides an anchor that will help to maintain and enhance the character of downtown, um, per page thirty of the P O C D. And the Playhouse is specifically called out as an anchor of the downtown on page forty-nine. Um, and then page forty-eight also talks specifically about the need to renovate, um, the Playhouse to prevent, to support the vibrancy and vitality of downtown.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion of the motion? Yeah, my view is, is completely echo what Ms. Nielsen said, and look, I think we need to be creative. And this is clearly a very important property and very important use within town, and, and I think some of the ideas here are pretty exciting, and we need to be pushing forward on, you know, some new ideas for this. So I, I think it's, I think it's great. Anybody else? Okay, I call the question as to whether, uh, this is consistent with the plan of conservation development. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Clarence Scornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Um, I, item, you're welcome. Item number two, eight twenty-four review referral from the W P C A for a report for a location and or extension of the municipal sewer system for property located at seven fifty-one Weed Street, map thirty-two, block twenty, lot nine forty-four, and one acre zone. So commissioners, as you know, about a week ago, we spent an extensive amount of time discussing this. Um, we agreed to, um, draft a negative referral to the W P C A. Um, we encouraged, uh, beyond our meeting. We also encouraged additional comments. Um, there was additional comments to Mr. Gelderman and Planner Avney's draft. Um, I, I assume everybody has a copy of the latest draft. Okay, um, Mr. Attorney Gelderman, uh, do you want to, any comments you have to start?
Uh, no, I, the attempt, the, the purpose of this was to try to incorporate everybody's comments during the last meeting, um, with respect to especially planning considerations and, and, um, include them in this report, which will, uh, if it's adopted, be sent back to the W P C A. I believe they meet on July sixteenth. I think.
Sixteenth is Saturday.
Is what, is, is, well, they don't meet on Saturday.
Fifteenth.
I don't, um, sometime, sometime, soon. Twelfth, okay. I'll meet on the twelfth and, um, and take that report into consideration.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Attorney Gelderman. Um, so I, I'd recommend, um, you know, once again, we spent a lot of time talking about this. So any, um, commissioners, any issues or questions having to do with the latest draft?
I, I have a question. Under, under this, there's a planning, complaining considerations in all caps. And then it says, since the property already has access to the town sewer system. Uh, I, 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 I don't know whether that, uh, is intended to say that, uh, that, uh, the property as proposed, uh, would have access. I think we should say, since, since the property already has access to the sound, town sewer system and the applicant claims, uh, that it would continue to have access. We're not endorsing whether, we're not ruling on whether the, uh, uh, easement, uh, is, does or does not provide, uh, access to this, uh, proposed development.
Okay, I, I think, I think what we're saying here is they do have access. So it's sort of a, it's, I, I think Attorney Gelderman, what you're saying, it's, it's a statement of fact.
Correct, that currently, currently has access.
Yeah. So we're not advocating for the access or not. It's, it's just a statement of fact, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
That's the intent.
Right.
Uh, it's really a lead-in to the next part of that, which I think was one of Krista's comments, that there's no planning, uh, benefit to be served by, um, putting a new line in Elm Street. It doesn't do anything.
Right.
So, since there's already, all those properties, uh, along Elm Street are already
Okay.
served.
But I guess perhaps, Mr. Knag, your concern could be that the wording could imply that we're endorsing it, which I don't think we are, but is that?
Based on, based on, based on what council has stated, I, uh, you know, I'm satisfied.
Okay, okay, super. Anybody else?
I have two points, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
First one is a small wording, one in the first paragraph at the very end, says to accommodate a one-hundred-and-two-unit multifamily development. I would suggest adding the word planned, one-hundred-and-two-unit multifamily development. By not putting planned in, it may indicate that it's fait accompli, which it certainly is not. It has not been ruled on by those who are charged with ruling on this, and, um, I think it's more accurate. So I would suggest that word be, it did, edit, Mr. Chairman.
Sort of makes sense to me, Attorney Gelderman. You comfortable?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, everybody good?
Uh, also the question on the, um, the section is planning considerations and mentions, uh, page thirteen, enhance community character. I believe this was discussed at our last, um, meeting and whether that is, uh, even though it's in our plan of conservation development, which objectively is, um, on the, um, um, what, um, how that can be tied, if at all, uh, to this type of an application. And my sense of your comments and others is that, uh, that is not, um, going to generate traction. So I'm wondering whether that section should be reworded in some way or dropped. That's my question.
Uh, it, it certainly can be dropped. I mean, the, ultimately, there's nothing in here that sacrosanct. You could, you could delete or not. The care, the reference to character, remember, is if, if that's coming out of the reference that Attorney Hollister made to, um, general, to Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine, that talks about taking character. That relates to zoning regulations. Um, this, of course, P O C D is a planning tool. Planning and zoning, even though you are a combined planning and zoning commission, they're absolutely, actually separate functions. So the term character as used in this report is referencing the P O C D. And Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine is making reference to zoning regulations. But having said that, it, um, if, if the commission feels that it should come out, you should take it out.
Thank you for your comments.
Are you comfortable with that, Mr. Chris?
Um, I am comfortable leaving it in.
Okay, super. Anybody else? Okay, everybody good? Okay, um, Attorney Gelderman, typically we say consistent or not consistent, but I'm inclined to ask for a motion to approve, um, the draft referral report. Is, is that okay from a legal perspective?
It is, as amended by, uh, Mr. Chris.
As amended by Mr. Chris. Okay.
Right.
Right. So do I have a motion to approve, um, the referral of this report to, um, the W P C A?
Commissioner Chris, I will so move.
Okay, um, I think we've already made the case, but anything you'd like to add in terms of reasons for approval, but it, it's in here, so.
I would, the reasons for approval would simply be the points that are stated within the document itself. So it would just be reiterating that.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Okay, nice and easy, and I agree with that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do I have any further discussion of the motion? Okay, seeing none, I call the question for, uh, the referral of a negative report to the W P C A. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Clarence Scornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we will now go into public hearing. Um, Attorney Gelderman, have a good night. Thank you, as always, and get home safe. Um, item number three, two eighty Rosebrook Road. Um, upon application, David Rucci, Lampert, Two and Rooty LLC, authorization for Nielsen revocable trust owners for special permit approval and type plan approval of sections three, four, C six, A two B to allow an in-ground pool to be constructed within the hundred-and-fifty-foot restricted front yard setback area in the two-acre zone at two eighty Rosebrook Road. Mr. Rucci?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to refuse myself from this application.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Nielsen. Um, all alternates are seated, so we will not be seating anyone for, um, Mrs. Nielsen.
Yeah, hi, good evening, David Rucci, Lampert, Two and Rooty. I'm here representing the Nielsen's, uh, Peter Nielsen is with me in the audience as well this evening. If, um, Lynn, you could just put up the presentation that I just handed out to you. Um, yeah. So this is a property over on, um, two eighty Rosebrook Road. I know a lot of you have probably been by it before. It's one of the, actually, one of the older homes, um, in New Canaan. Came from somewhere around the, uh, eighteen hundreds, but it's from a farm from like the seventeen hundreds. So it's really actually a special piece of property, um, over on Rosebrook, and it's really worth, um, going by that road and going up and down that road and looking at this particular piece as well as some of the others on Rosebrook. So what you're looking at first here is the existing property. You'll see that this house is oriented, excuse me, in a way that sort of puts their backyard parallel to Rosebrook Road, which is essentially why we're asking to cite this pool within the front yard setback. Uh, I'm sorry, front yard restricted area, hundred-and-fifty-foot restricted area, just based on the fact that that's sort of where the backyard is and the most appropriate place to put this particular pool. You also note that the house itself actually goes over the setback line on the front of the property. Um, it's got a large barn on the property as well, um, but most of this work is all going to be done in an area where the English gardens, uh, were. And if you'll go to the next slide, please, number four. Um, you'll just see sort of the area that we're talking about here. Um, it basically sits, um, in this sort of, uh, south east corner of the property, and it's, um, surrounded by, uh, really a large stone wall that runs along Rosebrook Road. Um, you can go to the next slide as well. And just to sort of orientate you here, so this is looking from the house, sort of, and you'll see on the left-hand side of the property, that's Rosebrook, um, and that stone wall. And you'll see is, your topography sort of sits down into this particular piece of property, and we're going to nestle the pool site right within that particular area, which is really a good site for it. It's really going to be hidden from just about everywhere, um, on the property. If you actually look across the, um, stone wall there, that's all land trust property, um, to, over that stone wall which goes over Rosebrook. Um, next slide, please. So once again, this is just showing that particular area. You'll sort of see, there's a, there's kind of a stone path that also sits within these particular areas on the other side of these bushes, and you'll see that again when we go back to the site plan. If you'll just move kind of along, this is just looking back up at the house. Once again, you see how the topography drops down here into this particular area. We can just keep going through these sort of quickly. Thank you. And then there's the site again. You've sort of seen the stone, the, um, the, uh, walkways in this particular area. And then once again, Rosebrook Road's on your left-hand side in this particular picture. And this is looking back up. You'll see that it's sort of surrounded by stone wall, also looking up into the east part of the property. Um, once again, fairly hidden, this, this particular site is going to be from all these neighbors and really a good, good, good place for it. And if you just keep moving, please. And then there's the stone wall we're talking about before. That's the other side of Rosebrook Road. That's where the land trust property is. There is a house sort of about a hundred-and-fifty, sixty feet, uh, beyond where that, uh, pine tree is on the left-hand side, which you really can't see um, at all, and you'll never see the pool from, from that particular site, just based on the topography and the woods. I mean, these are pictures are all taken, actually, in the winter, um, prior to, uh, any of the green, uh, greens coming out or foliage coming out. Um, next picture, this is the stone wall in the front. Once again, you see it's at a higher, uh, topography than even the road itself. So once again, this pool is going to be sort of hidden behind there. And by the way, the pool is beyond the setback. It's just within that a hundred-and-fifty-foot area. It's not within the setback. Next slide, please. And then there's some, just, yeah, so those next two slides are just showing the house. The houses, you know, the nearest one and kind of the rear is about three hundred-and-eighty feet away. And if you go to the next house, this is the one across the street that I was talking about, that's sort of hidden behind those pine trees. That one's only about a hundred-and-sixty-six feet away, really negligible as to whether or not they'll ever, you know, see anything in this particular, uh, area where the pool is. Um, we are gonna, if you just move on, we are gonna have a, we have a small landscape plan for the time being. Um, there'll be more landscaping added um, along the south of the property. Uh, sort of, there's a, there's a house actually being built almost where the, um, the crib sheet is there for the different areas. So we will be adding additional screen in there. I mean, obviously, when you want to put a pool in, you're going to want to screen that as much as from the neighbors as much as, you know, they don't want to see your pool. So that's going to sort of be the design, um, for this particular, um, project. Um, you know, we believe as far as the site plan, I'm sorry, special permit criteria goes that, you know, we have a larger lot. We have a, a, a good site for this particular piece of property because it's going to be going into an area that's at a lower depressed topography than the rest of the property. It's going to be well-hidden, well-screened. Um, it's going to kind of blend in to the, uh, site itself. Um, it's really the most appropriate place to put it as well, just based on the fact that that's where their rear yard is on the property. You're not really going to want to put it, excuse me, anywhere else. Um, we believe it fits with the plan of conservation development, just in the fact that you're citing something in an area that's already sort of had a disturbance in it in one way, shape, or another, since it used to have the English garden in it to begin with. And then these particular types of properties, you know, they're large. I mean, if you look back actually at the Google Mac that I showed before, I think every house has a pool in the entire area, so it's not going to be something inconsistent with, um, this particular home. So we're, we're looking for approval to, um, install this pool. Um, we're going to be putting it in this hundred-and-fifty-foot restricted area, but outside the setback itself. And, um, I can answer any questions that you may have about that.
Questions for the applicant?
Uh, as far as lighting, those, are you proposing the repairs or?
I mean, I think it's just going to be normal pool, you know, low lighting, obviously. Um, I don't think there's an actual lighting plan. There's not going to be any sort of spotlights on the property in and of itself. Um, but I'm assuming it's just going to be low lighting. Uh, there'll probably be a pool light as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
There's John Chris had a couple of questions. Uh, I was on page four of your plan, sir.
The site plan?
That's correct, sir. So, um, just to understand, so I can understand all the buildings. So one of the, I guess, this very center, it's a very long rectangle. That's the barn.
Uh, in the center of the property, yes, behind the house, correct.
House is sort of down to the right.
Yeah.
And the pool would be just below that, at least on this map.
Correct.
And in the pool area, there's a, I guess, a solid line. It looks hatched from sort of north to south. What, what's that exactly?
So that's, um, the rebuilding of the walkways that are in there right now. There's already an existing walkway in the property. There's a couple of pictures that stores show it, but there, it's a very faint in there, but there used to be an English garden. So there's already a walkway in that particular area, so they're essentially rebuilding that walkway. And that's what's being shown with that hatchery that sort of runs north-south.
And between the walkway and Rosebrook is going to be?
Just plantings and.
So the walkway, so the, there's not going to be a pool deck or anything between the walkway and that? Okay.
No, nothing between that and the stone wall.
Well, if someone is standing right on the edge of the pool looking towards Rosebrook, um, I'm trying to get a sense of the height of the wall and so forth, and what could be seen over the wall, and what can be seen from the, from the road into that area, if you could help me out.
Uh, I would say almost nothing. I mean, that wall is a probably a six-foot wall and the, yeah, well, between, from the street to the top of that wall is going to likely be somewhere around six feet. Um, you can tell even from the, uh, I mean, it's, it's larger than a four-foot wall to begin with, because it's existing. It's probably one of the old, one of the older stone walls in town. Um, if you even just look at the height of the bill, of the house behind it, that's the second floor of that house. So my guess is that wall's got to be at least six to eight feet from, if you're standing at the street.
Fair enough. Um, I guess there's going to be various stonework. I'm on page, I don't know, what this thing is, probably eight. It's the view from the pool location looking west up the yard, and it shows a stone wall that's going to be, uh, increased in height. You could find that one.
I'm sorry, which page on?
Uh, nine, actually. It's that number. It's number nine. Sorry, sir. So
that's.
It's about a two-foot wall, and you can add a foot on top of it.
Looks like we're adding an additional two feet on top of that wall. So four feet would be allowable under the zoning regs.
Okay, I'm going to check that.
Yeah.
Um, the wall here looks like, uh, fieldstone, it may be wet wall or drywall. I can't. Um, the wall here looks like uh, fieldstone and maybe wet wall or drywall. I can't tell. Um, looks like it's been there for a while.
Probably.
Probably. Um, the wall this could be built up will be fieldstone?
Yes, fieldstone.
Natural fields.
Natural fieldstone.
To match the current wall as best one can.
Right, and it'll, it'll likely watch, match the wall on the front too, is my guess.
Okay, they look to be similar type of local granite, best I can tell. And I had a question on the landscape plan, number 14, please. Could be 15. It's just a title page. Um, it mentions posed. Could you walk through what you're considering as far as trees and shrubbery, sir?
No, no, no. Well, Peter, come on up. You're gonna have to actually, I'm not sure. Just gonna introduce yourself.
Hi, Peter Nielsen, 280 Rosebrook. Um, I believe it's probably burnum, cranberry, whatever, or something local. And another thing that I don't actually remember from a landscaping perspective.
I think, as I understood from uh, Mr. Rucci on this map, I guess the one going from the right and down to the left. You said there's a neighbor's house going to be built and we're planning to put this in.
Yeah, if you look on that property line, there's a house being built just to the right. So we will be planting um, along that line, probably sometime this winter. We're also just waiting to also understand what they're going to do on their edge of the uh, the properties to make sure.
As far as this application goes, um, uh, often the uh, the commission, especially me, request native plantings. Uh, would that be acceptable?
Yep, absolutely. So I, I think I said viburnum, but I think their landscaper has advised that cranberry viburnum is native. So that is certainly something that we're interested in doing.
That would include the trees? What kind of trees are you thinking about?
Along the property line?
We said there, it says here, um, proposed trees to be added. So they're one, two, three, four, five, and just wondering.
So um, to be determined, but certainly amenable to anything that we need to do as far as making sure that it's native.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Sure.
You also have Mr. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Correct. Anybody else? Okay, um, would anyone in the room like to address this application? Seeing none, Lynn, let's uh, check Zoom land, please.
Is anyone on, oh, Mr. Engel wants to speak.
No, I was just waving it off.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Um, does anyone on Zoom wish to speak on this application? If you do, could you just raise your icon hand? There doesn't appear to be anyone, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, super. This application's closed. Um, somebody let Mrs. Nielsen? Okay, item number four, 119 Clearview Lane upon application, David Rucci, Lambert, Two, and Rucci, authorized agent for Michael and Sandra Savage for a special permit and site plan approval sections 34C1, 34C6A2B1B to allow detached garage barn in excess of 1,000 square feet to be located within 150-foot front yard setback area and contain space for more than five vehicles in the two-acre zone at 119 Clearview Lane, Mr. Rucci. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, David Rucci. Again, um, this evening, um, we're talking about a piece of property up at 118 Clearview Lane. I do have on the, um, hopefully online Lynn Howard Kelly, who's the architect on this project. And also Mike Mitchell, who's the landscape architect on this project. And um, as we go through this uh, presentation, I, I will turn to them when we get to the um, both the architecture and the landscape.
Mr. Rucci, you said Howard Kelly and what was the other?
Howard Kelly and Mike Mitchell.
Oh, he, Mike Mitchell is already on.
Okay. So we're here this evening to um, request the construction of a detached garage on the property. Once again, um, this is an issue where we're going to be within 150 feet of the front yard setback. Um, we're looking to put in a, a, a new garage on the site that essentially will be used to um, house a car collection um, for the uh, applicant. Um, if you, thank you. So we have a large site here. We actually have an oversized lot in this zone. Um, it's almost four acres in the two-acre zone. It's just a little bit under that. It's about 3.97 acres. Um, so in and of itself, a lot itself, you know, we always feel like that can handle accessory structures, just based on the fact that you do have an oversized lot in the zone. Um, the location of the garage, if you'll just, oh, thank you, already have the next slide up. Thank you. So the location of the garage is sort of as you come up this, if you remember, if you know Clearview Lane, so this is the old, like years ago Woolworth property. So Clearview Lane sort of dead ends and then it splits off and goes to like another four or five houses down this area. So you have these long accessways down off of Clearview Lane, and this is one of them. Uh, this is one of the houses that was built sort of off that circle at the end. Um, so you'll see that uh, as we go up, you're going to see this driveway come off. Um, clear, uh, come off the, the particular accessway. Uh, it says page six, when? Thanks. I just blew it up a little bit. It's really hard on the Google Maps to sort of see these, but this is just a blow up of what was just on the other piece of property and just makes it a little bit easier to see sort of where this accessway comes, where the driveway comes, and then how the the barn is going to be serviced by the same driveway uh, that goes to the existing house. Go to the next site. I'm sorry, next slide. So once again, just taking an overview of, of Clearview, and you'll see once again, you have this large lot in this particular zone. And I've done measurements sort of as far away as some of these other uh, properties sit. Um, and if you've been up on Clearview, you know, there's tremendous amount of woods already in this particular area of um, of New Canaan. And really, the, the closest house is probably somewhere about a hu- uh, 200 and one, I'm sorry, 138 feet away. Most of the others, you can't see at all. You can see a little bit of the one that's about 138 feet away, but that garage actually faces this particular garage as well, or this new garage. And the way that we've cited this garage, you'll see when we get through the pictures, it's very understated. Um, it's um, although it's a five-car garage, it's only got two bays. And the way it kind of sits, once again, into the topography here is that it sits lower than the house and also sits lower than everything else, sort of on this particular ridge as it comes down. You go to the next slide, please. So here's sort of coming up the driveway, and it's going to be uh, sighted sort of up into that area there. It's above the stone wall. And that's not the greatest picture. If you'll go to the next picture, please. So that's where the stone walls, it's above the stone wall. So if you were kind of looking down on the right-hand corner of the property, that's where your, your driveway is. And then the, it's gonna veer off above that stone wall into that, into that slot. Next picture, please. Uh, this is just the view looking from the west side of the neighbors. Um, you know, you're not going to really be able to see any houses. There's just not a lot to see it kind of up here. Um, except for, like I said, that one house, which you can see a little bit. Um, and that house is um, go to the next page, please. Now that's looking down across the accessways. Um, once again, it's going to be sort of up on top of there and down onto the accessways. And then the next one, slide please. So that's sort of the closest house you can see. Um, and that's what I was talking about before. I mean, this, once again, these are winter pictures. So um, you know, it's still far away. It's not really a lot of living space per se for that particular applicant anyway. And I think that when you see a copy of, I'm sorry, when you see a picture of this particular um, garage, you'll, you'll note how understated it is. And that's sort of where we get to the next slides here. So here's coming up the driveway, and you see they've kind of superimposed into that right-hand corner where the, where the actual um, barn will be. And um, it's a, it's about 2100 square foot barn. Um, so uh, it's uh, over 1,000 square feet, which is one of the special permits that we're requesting along with the fact that it's within the 150 uh, foot setback. Um, next page, please. And these are just sort of the designs on, on either side of, of the barn itself and kind of what it's going to look like from the inside and from uh, the outside. Um, and some of the uh, materials are, are listed on this page. Uh, it's, it's one and a half stories. Uh, there's, it's, it's a loft though. It's not like there's any living space on the second floor or anything like that. Um, and it's going to consist, it will have a lift in it for the cars. And as we sort of go through these next pictures, if you can just skip Lynn to uh, 17. And I can let the architect go back and go through these for, you know, the architects on the board. This is sort of how the cars are, are gonna be slotted in these particular um, places. There is one lift on the property uh, or in the barn. Um, and there's a, there's a small uh, you know, area to work in um, a, a, as well. Uh, maybe page 20, you kind of move along. Obviously, any questions about the architectural plans, I can have Howard answer those directly, but I'm just sort of moving through to, to get everybody an idea. So 20 and 21, once again, are sort of taking, taking a look at, at the barn from the front, from the front and from the side. And then the next page, 21, will show you uh, exactly kind of the nice little interior look at it as if there are uh, no walls in there and sort of also where it sits, that kind of on the left-hand top uh, side, both below that particular, the house itself. I think I might have put seven on one and twice. Uh, we do have a landscape plan as well. Disregard page 24, that's my mistake. And I know that um, you know, members of the board will want to talk about the, the landscaping as well. Uh, we are proposing landscaping, obviously, on this particular site. Um, and we do have a landscape plan that's been put together by Mike Mitchell. I'll let Mike speak directly to that. Um, do you want me to uh, Mr. Chairman, go directly to the architect and/or the landscape?
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's do that. Let's hear from everybody.
Okay, uh, Howard, if you wouldn't mind just walking through the architecture again?
So I, sure. Uh, should we look at the renderings maybe? Is that a good place to start?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Howard Kelly is the architect um, in charge of the project.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Lynn. Um, so really the, as um, David said, the idea here, both for the owner's benefit and for the neighbors, is to sort of take a large building and make it blend into the site. Um, to, so you know, we sort of half-buried it in the hill on the right um, as it comes down from the owner's home, so that it doesn't feel like a 2100 square foot building uh, all at once. It's sort of, it's sort of partially recessed into the landscape. Um, we're using very um, modern materials. Um, this is a charred spruce product uh, that is kind of naturally weather resistant. So it's sort of a modern take um, on a barn uh, that would have been painted red back in the day, but this is another version uh, going to a Japanese tradition of um, charred wood. Um, very straightforward windows and garage door that mimic what we've recently renovated on the main house that you can kind of see on the lower left uh, rendering where it's, it's adjacent to the main house. Exactly. Um, and then in the rendering, you can see, and there's also a picture on the, the picture page, uh, which is the next slide of the exterior lighting. These are cut-off fixtures. So the lower right, right there, um, the light only comes out of the bottom right where Lynn's cursor is, uh, and then at the very bottom of the fixture. So it's really just providing enough light to be able to access the garage at night, but not planning any large overhead lighting or anything uh, of that nature. Um, this page also shows a concept, the upper-left picture is actually also in New Canaan. It's um, a, a project, a recent add to a um, Philip Johnson-designed property. Uh, so this is kind of the same idea, the natural stone base, the um, charred wood siding, and then kind of a dark metal roof. Um, and uh, one other thing we wanted to go over was um, we will uh, make sure that, you know, we're, we're taking care of our drainage here. You know, this is kind of a hobby barn. So um, we're going to introduce a commercial um, oil and grit separator, which is essentially anything that runs off the cars would be kind of collected in a, in a pit before it exits the building to regular bullet, you know, regular site drainage. Um, so that we're not releasing anything into the environment. Um, and I know that uh, we, we have received review from um, health department because we have to move the uh, the septic and the wetlands as well. So I think that's it, David. Anything else I missed?
Not, uh, I don't know if there's any questions on the architects, from the architect's perspective.
I have a question about the uh, kind of the site planning. Uh, did you consider using the existing driveway and kind of intersecting to it instead of creating uh, this long drive? Um, I realized that the uh, topography is challenging, but I think you could use retaining wall and be able to uh, reduce the amount of pavement. And uh, why is there a need for a secondary entrance?
Sure, uh, we, if you saw the uh, amount of trace paper that we went through to locate this, it's pretty funny, but um, really, anywhere we tried to put it along that driveway, um, I don't have a very good picture here, but the front wall um, along the existing driveway is in parts eight to nine feet tall. Um, so anything we did would have made the barn feel really apparent. It would have been sort of the feature of the property. And we're trying, trying to go the other way. So this was sort of the happiest medium, medium we could get to uh, without creating kind of a terrorist effect and, and having to do tiers of walls um, up, up the hill there. Because it, it's quite steep in every direction to the west from that driveway.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I think I'll have Mike Mitchell talk about the landscape plan. If uh, Mike, you wouldn't mind just running through it? This is on the second to last page of the uh, presentation.
Sure. Mike Mitchell, landscape architect. So like Howard said, um, you know, the garage is sort of half-buried, right? So retaining wall on the uphill side to get the garage grades to work. So to cut the driveway and you better lose a couple of trees. So there's two evergreens that are going to need to be removed and two deciduous trees. So what we propose is everything basically above the existing stone wall that's off Clearview Lane. So if you can see from our plan, we've got um, a one-for-one replacement of the deciduous trees, a, a red maple and a pin oak. And then we've got a mixture of other large evergreens, 14 to 16-foot tall Norway spruce and um, green giant arbor bodies to have some year-round screening um, from the accessway coming down Clearview Lane.
Mike, do you want to just run through what kind of trees um, you're proposing to plant in those areas?
Sure. So there's, um, so we're taking out four trees, but we're planting 14 um, of those 14 trees. Um, like I said, two are deciduous, we've got a, a red maple, um, and a pin oak, which are natives. And then we're using uh, Norway spruce and green giant arbor body for um, for year-round screening, for evergreen screening. We looked at using, you know, native um, evergreen trees. But um, you know, the pines over time, they get really thin on the bottom and um, really, this seemed like the most appropriate tree to, you know, to give some year-round screening um, for both the, the green giant and the um, Nor- Norway spruce.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question on the?
Please, please go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
The uh, red maple and uh, pin oak, I, I really have no questions on. I did on the uh, green giant, which is fairly common one. I, I see in many landscape plans, it grows fast and relatively deer-resistant. So exactly. People tend to like it. And Norway spruce and arbor, uh, actually, the green giant was developed in Denmark in the 30s. It's uh, really an exotic. And the Norway spruce is um, again, also a northern European tree. But I, 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 I take your point about some of the um, as trees get bigger, they get to be less um, full towards the trunk and the base. Have you considered uh, natives that perhaps will go larger and provide upper screening? And then have a, a smaller picket of um, bushes such as um, mountain laurel and so forth, which is a state flower. It's an evergreen. It's very nice, very nice plant, tend to be pretty deer-resistant and sort of giving it up that way. So you can have more of a, a native type of presentation. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we, um, we definitely looked at that. Like I said, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to get height here. I mean, you can see the proposed garage. I think it's up at um, 290, 294 elevation, give or take. And you know, the road down there is, you know, the low point, 278. So we got to come up. And, you know, the road down there is, you know, the low point two seventy-eight. So we got to come up, you know, solid fourteen feet. So to really get that, you know, full screening effect from, from clear view, you know, we want trees that start out big. So like I said, we're using, you know, fourteen to sixteen footers to start. And, you know, really, you know, the only other tree that would work as far as an evergreen, you know, screen would be hemlocks. But those have their own sort of health issues, you know, the woolly indulgent and, you know, deer browse on them pretty frequently. So very susceptible to deer damage, especially in the perimeter of this property. So we felt like these, you know, these two trees are definitely the most suited, suited for this sort of application.
What about red cedar? I mean, it's a native and pretty full. And for the lower reaches, you could have, again, some type of about four or five foot bushes that are evergreen, provide some, some mix and some additional color to.
Yeah, I think there's definitely, you know, pockets in there, you know, above the wall. You know, before you get to those trees to tuck in some native shrubs and that, you know, sort of five to eight foot tall range. You know, the enjamina would work for, for year round. There's probably a couple of other, you know, bigger shrubs, like double file by burns. It would work too. But those would be more seasonal screening.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the
Yep, please. One more question on the site drainage as far as the new driveway. Is that draining towards the existing driveway and then out, out onto Clearview?
There's, I, this is the architect Howard Kelly. The civil engineer couldn't be with us, but I believe if you go up to the survey again, which is near the top of the presentation, it shows a new catch basin at the bottom of this driveway. Obviously, we're adding a significant amount of ground coverage here. So we're having to comply with all the engineering regulations for drainage. So the new catch basin collects everything from this driveway. Yeah, right there. Thank you, Lynn.
What, what is the maximum number of cars that could be stored in this building?
Five.
That's the max.
That's the max, yes. And once again, it's for, it's for collectors' use. So it's not like you're going to have a tremendous amount of activity of cars coming back and forth there. It's really to drive, you know, every once in a while to come and to have that area for your hobby.
I didn't see anything on the website, but I'm assuming we haven't received any, or you haven't received any neighbor comments?
No, there was a neighbor who reached out to us early on in the process about what was being built and how it was being built. And we reached back out to them and then we didn't really hear from them again. That was two months ago because we were actually supposed to be on last month. So I think they're, I think they're fine with it.
Mr. Ritchie, how many garage spaces are there currently? I assume there's already a garage attached to the
Uh, Howard, I think there's three. Is that right?
Actually, four.
Four already. On, on the main house.
On the main house, correct.
And just to confirm what I think you just said. The savages, they're collectors. There's not going to be any business use.
No, no business, no business use on the property.
Okay. And I know we went through the topography. But maybe just spend one more minute going through how you looked at the site and how you arrived at this, at the, at the, at the location. And, you know, I think at the beginning you noted that where the location is, is on top of a hill. But then later you said you're trying to tuck it in. So sort of help me understand.
Right. I can let Howard talk about that. But yes, the topography really comes down from the top of the house all the way down to Clearview. It's a fairly steep drop. So even though it is actually tucked into an area of the property because the hills behind it are, are higher than even there. But I can let Howard talk a little bit about, you know, I think to the question that Mr. Turner had about, you know, why didn't you just try to use the same driveway? It would have caused a tremendous amount of, you know, grading to be done and tearing to be done in order to hold this hill up. But I can let Howard talk again. He was the one who, who put it in the site. So maybe Howard, you can just run through that once more.
Sure. It's hard. It's, there's no one good picture that catches the whole thing. But, you know, Mike Mitchell kind of alluded to it. If you start at the bottom on Clearview, it's about thirty to thirty-two feet up to the savages home currently. So and, and everything off the front of that is extremely steep. So this picture is kind of catching it. I mean, you can't even barely see the garage. That's how steep the hill is. So anywhere that we put the garage up at that level would have created a really kind of untenable look for the neighborhood and for the neighbors. It would have kind of pivoted the garage off the top of the hill. So what we've kind of done, I think that sorry, Lynn, to make you move again, but that on that sheet three hundred, it shows the site section. That's probably the easiest place to see the heights. So slide number twenty-one. Next, next page, sorry. There you go. So that upper left picture, that's really where the building is. The entire roof line is below the middle of the first floor of the savages home. But there's still another fifteen to twenty feet of hill even below that on the left side of the site section. So we've kind of reached a medium where we minimize the height of the driveway that we needed. We minimize the retaining walls we needed. We actually integrated the back half of the retaining wall into the back half of the building so that it's kind of buried. And we're not looking at a lot of walls. So that's kind of how we got to where we got to.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Lynn, let's, anybody in the room like to address this application? Lynn, let's look in Zoom land, please. Okay, we good? Okay, super.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioners, there's, there's a lot going on here, but I'm, I'm still inclined to close this application. Is everybody comfortable with that? Okay, super. This application is closed. Item number five, we're into regular meeting mode deliberation. Any possible action opposed to public hearing item? Item number three, two eighty Rosebrook Road. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Ken Turner, I motion to approve. My reasons are, I think the the structure, the, the house has responded or that it follows the P O C D as far as historical character. That house, once upon a time, was in a, in a state of bad repair. I mean, it was, needed a lot of work. And I think the owners have done a remarkable job at restoring the house. I think they even added air conditioning. But it's in keeping with the neighborhood. It's, as I said, it's historical and they've done a very good job of, of enhancing the landscaping, screening the driveway and continue to add new, new landscaping. So I trust that with this pool that they'll be able to cite it in a way that will minimize any kind of view and from, from the neighbors. And I think that we should approve this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion of the motion. One thing I'll let completely agree with everything Mr. Turner said, you know, one thing I'll also add is, you know, the, the placement of the pool is very much driven by the configuration of the property as well. And so we, based upon property configurations in the past, we have approved applications like these. Anybody else?
The, the stone walls are important to protect the property and viewers from outside from the road. So I assume that the stone wall would be retained and maintained. I don't know whether we need to say that, but.
As it like a condition?
Yeah.
I think, I think, I think they, sorry to interrupt. I think they stated on the record that that's their intent. Don't you think?
I do. I mean, I think that there, we'd like to see some more landscaping, what they're thinking as far as the specifics. We could have a couple of conditions that the wall is maintained and that they would submit a landscape plan at the appropriate time.
Yeah, I'm a little, I mean, I don't have an issue with a landscape plan if you all want to go that way. I'm a little concerned about requiring walls to be kept in place or maintained. I mean, not saying that they wouldn't.
True, true, true. And I mean, they have demonstrated a great deal of care about the site and the house and have brought it back to life. So I think they've proven themselves.
Yeah, I just, you know, sometimes I worry about overconditioning some of these applications. And sort of overdirecting. But Lynn, I mean, that, that's my thinking on the wall, but the landscaping, if you all want to do something on that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Chris, I'm, I'm okay with not putting a requirement in on the wall regarding the landscaping. It was asked and answered by the applicant that they are happy to have a more robust and detailed landscaping plan. I've made the plans and I will take their word for it.
Okay. Anybody, everybody good with that?
That would be a condition as they have agreed to in, in our session.
Okay. So your condition is for native landscaping.
Yeah, a more detailed plan.
Mr. Turner, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So when you make that condition, they also noted that the, there's construction at the property next door. So do you want them to provide that landscape plan prior to the issuance of a building permit or a priority issuance of a C O? Because I suspect that they're going to build their pool prior to the new house being built.
They really deserve to see what the neighbor's going to do. And that could take some time. You know, it could be a good year after their C O. So I, I think it's, you know, in good faith that at some point in time, it's appropriate once the construction is finished next door and landscaped and they know what they're going to do, then they can come forward with some kind of plan.
Lynn, are you okay? We're drafting it that way? Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Florence Scornia?
Yes.
Kristin, nope, Kristin Nielsen, she pre-cues. John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Paul Connect?
Yes.
Okay, super. Okay, item number four, one nineteen Clearview Lane. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
John Chris, I move we approve with the condition that the landscape plan be revisited and use more natives. There are certainly many heavily screening facilitating natives such as native hollies, which are very pretty trees and are certainly very thick. Then could be used as opposed to the, the two that were, we discussed such as the Ateusha, Green Giant and the Norway spruce. The other two are well-known native trees and they're, they're fine with me. But that was the only alteration I would make.
Okay, so Mr. Chris, a revised plan with increased native planting usage to be approved by the planner.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so for other reasons for approval, Mr. Chris?
The site itself is relatively isolated. It's at the end of, beyond the end of a cul-de-sac. It is on a hill and is visible, but given the topography and the location of neighbors, it, it really is pretty, pretty far away. And even the one neighbor you can see, we saw the thing facing it was the front of the garage. So no one's going to be looking under that. And that was in winter and was a little hard to see even that. So I think in natural screening will take care of a good deal. I think that is partially banked into the soil also helps decrease the impact of the building. And the building design seemed to be relatively innocuous, straightforward and simple and barn, barn-like, typical in the country setting.
Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, for a discussion of the motion? Yet, I mean, look, my, my view is it's a big building. It's a lot more parking, but, you know, that a couple, they are collectors and I was encouraged, well, encouraged and one, there was no negative public input. And then two echoing Mr. Chris a little bit, it, it does appear that they've worked pretty hard in terms of finding the most suitable site, you know, given the challenges of topography. And also the screening, you know, it did, from looking at the screening, it looks like they are making a genuine effort to put the screening where is it's most needed. Anybody else? Okay, I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Clarence Scornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Paul Connect?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Item number six, regular meeting, twenty-one Forest Street. Upon application, Rebecca Kimball authorized agent for Connor Rose Realty, Inc. Owners for Site Plan Approval of Section four, three, C nine for Personal Services Establishment to provide wellness movement studio with small group fitness training with areas for Pilates reformer and I may mispronounce this gyro tonic in the retail B zone at twenty-one Forest Street. Who's here to present? Mr. Sax?
Good evening, Town Planner Brooks Avney, Chairman Goodwin and members of the commission. My name is Brock Sax. I'm here in my capacity to as a licensed real estate salesperson with Compass in New Canaan. I represent Rebecca Kimball, who currently owns and operates Combine X Fitness located at twenty-two Pine Street, New Canaan. We've negotiated lease. We're subject to site plan approval. Rebecca will rebrand and open as House of Tellus. A boutique wellness studio in the rear portion of Unit C one at twenty-one Forest Street located in New Canaan's retail B zone. As pictured in Exhibit A of our site plan application, Unit C one and twenty-one Forest Street is the forty-three hundred square foot commercial space previously occupied pet, by pet value, which closed in late twenty twenty. As you are aware, twenty-one Forest Street was approved in two thousand and twelve as a new development called Heritage Square, comprised of luxury residential condos and two ground floor commercial condos. Unit C one and the other unit is C two, which is just over thirteen hundred and sixty square feet currently occupied by green and tonic. Our site plan application seeks approval for the new use at, at the property per the town's planning and zoning regulations. Section four point three, C nine, personal service establishment, wellness activities with House of Tellos to offer small group training and other wellness movement services to include Pilates reformer, act, and acupuncture, punctures and a sports therapy massage. As per the attached proposed floor plan, House of Tellus will occupy the rear of twenty-five hundred square feet in a space after the landlord installs a demising wall, creating two separate commercial spaces. The remaining eighteen seventy-five square feet on the forest street side of the space will be marketed for lease to a tenant yet to be determined. My site plan application notes the following two important items in as far as Unit C one. House of Tellus will not involve outdoor storage of any equipment, supplies or products. And just want to talk about parking. We included Exhibit C, the developer's parking memo that was included in the twenty-twelve site plan and special permanent application. As you will see, when approved in twenty twelve, the plan of development for twenty-one Forest Street allowed for a reduction, five parking spaces and in the end provided for twenty-one parking spaces to be split between Unit C one and the Unit C two, which on a pro rata share basis allow Unit C one to have sixteen parking spaces and Unit C two to have five. To that end, House of Tellus will have eight or nine of the sixteen allotted to Unit C one. We envision that the parking requirements, traffic load will be the same as the retail use that was originally approved, approved at the site with the only difference being that House of Tellus will have peak operating hours that are early morning to early afternoon. With that said, my client Rebecca Kimball is here with me and we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry. I know you just said this, but could you repeat the parking? So I know there's twenty-one spots total for the commercial. How much does, what was pet value?
Sure. So in researching the, the file, the development was approved of twenty-one spaces dedicated to both commercial units. So that would be sixteen on a pro rata share basis, sixteen for Unit C one, which was pet value. And five for Unit C two, which is currently green and tonic.
Okay. And so House of Tellus is proposing to use nine of the sixteen spots allocated.
Correct. We're working that with the landlord, but yes, eight or nine on a pro rata share basis would be allocated to House of Tellus.
Okay, thank you.
Are any of those parking Are any of those parking spaces handicapped?
Uh, there, I believe there's a, the site plan shows another space that is handicapped when the development was improved uh approved, excuse me, in twenty twelve. There Yes, it's it's, I think Lynn has it up right there. Um.
Yeah. Is that the the crosshatched area is the van space?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and one over there as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
Will there be any retail?
Uh, the landlords, uh for House of Tellus, I think um Rebecca's here can speak to that. She may have some at the front, uh the entrance to her space um prior to entering the the gym portion of space. And then as far as the street side space that will be demised, uh they're looking for another tenant uh for that part of the space.
So House of Tellus will take up half of pet pantry?
Yeah, there.
Or not?
Correct, uh twenty five hundred of the forty three hundred. There's a floor plan that shows color coded um. Sorry, Lynn, I don't have, yeah. If you go back one more or two more, right there.
Okay.
So on on the right side is the street side uh and the left side is the rear portion that would be House of Tellus twenty five hundred square feet in the purple shaded or blue shaded.
Okay. Thank you. So that entrance will be from the rear?
Correct.
Will there be any signage on Forest Street?
It will be um on the uh entrance driveway entrance wall uh where they have signage right now about uh parking and so forth.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sax.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, do I have a motion for approval or denial of the site plan for twenty one Forest Street? Need somebody to jump into the cold water.
John Chris, Commissioner John Chris, I will uh move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the site plan.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Clarence Scornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Paul Connect?
Yes.
Okay, super. Item number seven, forty four Elm Street. Upon application of Straza Consulting authorized agent for forty four Elm Street Associate LLC Owners for site plan approval of section four two C four to allow interior alterations, create a food shop, retail Dunkin' Donuts and retail A zone at forty four Elm Street. Who's here to present, please?
Lynn, Lynn, hello, can you unmute? Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, please go ahead, sir.
Great, thanks, yep. Good evening, everyone. Um, we are here to move from eighty eight Elm to forty four dash forty eight Elm Street. Been in town twenty five years. Um, looking to increase size from eight hundred square feet to approximately fourteen fifty.
Excuse me, sir, uh could you give us your name, please?
Jim Kane.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We are looking to yeah, move down to forty four, four forty eight Elm Street, which corner store, which would give us more visibility. We will have double the space, we'll have windows on the side. Basically improving our our existing location into a a larger space. It'll be the new design inside. Better throughput, we'll have windows on the side, which would look nice. Um, and basically just continued twenty five years of awesome service in the town of New Canaan, which we, which we've had a pleasure of doing business there. So just just kind of moving down the street. Pretty simple.
Okay, questions for the applicant?
Um, I actually have a question for the planner, but maybe also for the applicant. I feel like in the last two-ish years, didn't we approve moving Dunkin' Donuts across the street?
Correct. Yes. And the problem there was our, we we had to have increased power there. We weren't able to get in that space, so it didn't work out.
Okay.
This John Chris had a question on the, um, I guess it's the the first uh drawing you have just before the proposed interior fit out. You know, it it looks like the space is square, or excuse me, rectangular, sorry, sir. And if you look at the uh um posed fit out, it it looks rectangular. It says area of work. And then farther down, further down, sorry. Um, it it appears to be somewhat of an L shape. I couldn't quite follow, so.
Yeah, so we're actually, so we're actually taking two spaces. So if you, if you see where the front door is, that is where seating would be, where on the last side you were at. And then anything in the back of the L is back of the house. So that's where our storage would be, our ovens, refrigeration. Yep, where your m- where your your mouse is now, yep. Yep.
So you the the space that's shown, I guess, um, where is it? Okay, um, where, sorry. Does it fit out one? Yeah, it shows a uh area of work. If you look at that page uh of a rectangular area with a crosshatch, it says area of work, so it's rectangular. The one next to it is L shaped. And then later on, it looks like an L shaped um footprint. So I was wondering if perhaps the map was mis- misidentified or something. I can't quite, can't quite follow still.
We have Paul's on the on the call. He could maybe answer that. Is he's he's the owner of the building. We can explain. Paul Stone.
Can you hear me?
Hey, Paul.
We can hear you.
Yes, um, so what that uh represents is the first one, Lynn, if you wanted to go to that, that's the survey of the entire building. And uh what Jim is uh proposing to do right now is um to occupy the space that's the former CBD um store adjacent to that is also the lingerie store, Soli twelve. And then on the left side of the page towards the gas station is the agency, which is a a section, yeah, there you go. Which is a section um of that building, that entire building. So this is a survey of the entire building. And the L shape would start from Elm Street, half of that there going across and then down. That's right. And then in between, right there is the lingerie store. So that's the difference, John.
Okay, so if this building, this rectangle on the far left as we're looking at it would be Morse Court and that's the um real estate broker office.
That's right.
I understand it. And then on the lower right, there would be a rectangle, which is a lingerie store, which is not shown here, but it's there. And then uh the planned Dunkin' Donuts would be on the um it would be fronting on Elm, smaller frontage, and then the longer on um uh South Avenue, and then it would jog sort of um to separate the the lingerie store from the uh um uh brokerage house, a brokerage facility, is that?
That's right. Lynn, if you scroll down to the the uh the floor plan, that'll hopefully just crystallize that for everyone. Yep, there you go. That's right. So to the left there, that's on that space, to to the left of that is lingerie store. Right, that's right. And bottom of the page, that's Elm Street. To the right of the page, on the right of that, that's South Avenue.
Uh, there's also a mezzanine there in the old CBD store and you, what happens to that?
That would get demolished and um, yeah. That would get demolished.
And there's a basement to the property as well, sir?
There, there's a small section of storage in the basement.
That would not be open to the public, that would?
No, no.
And the fit out would be um all ADA compliant?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Uh, sir, um there's technically sandwich boards are prohibited in the town of New Canaan. Now, a number of years ago, um this commission, we had a series of negotiations um with um the Chamber of Commerce representing many of the business owners. And you know, we we effectively are allowing sandwich boards. Um, the one thing I would ask you to think about is um tried, it's going to be tough to be diplomatic, but I think some sandwich boards look a little mass produced, pre-produced and other sandwich boards look better. And if I could ask you to just think about that as if I assume you will use sandwich boards going forward. Cause I think one of the challenges we have is we're allowing people to do this and then some sandwich boards don't look all that great. And then the other item is also to, you know, I think this new space is going to be more um prominent than, you know, your former space. And so I also ask you to just keep an eye on the type of signs that you put inside your window and think about.
Absolutely, yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question. This is um Clara Tiscornia. Um, usually with the Dunkin' Donuts, they tend to be very popular and a lot of times outside, the spaces tend to get a little messy. You know, there's like kids drop donuts and the coffee and you get ants and bees and just with this like kind of heightened um, you know, um exposure for this site, I would just really encourage you to try and keep it as neat and tidy as possible, since it's gonna be right.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep.
Okay, anybody else?
I would want a question. There was, it would be two Ingrises and Egresses. There's the one on uh the very back corner uh onto South Avenue and one on, the main one, I guess, is on Elm.
That right? Yep, but there's the 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 back one is not customer. That's that's just a back door for deliveries.
Okay, so really for customers is one Ingris Negris.
One Ingris, yep. Yep.
Uh, and um if you're planning anything outdoor seating and so forth, again, that's something you may wish to discuss with the planner.
Yeah, that's something we'll look at a later date for sure, yep.
I know you have some now, as do some others, but this is a different site um than where you are. So again, you may wish to discuss that with the planner.
Yep, appreciate that. We'll do.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, everybody good?
I just have one more concern. Um, just there, there won't be any illuminated lighting, will there?
So I'm, I, we're gonna go to the town with that and just and get exactly the specs that there that everyone looks for in the town. We're not gonna go above and beyond and do anything different. I spoke to my sign vendor recently and he said, saw something about dim lighting or goose necks. We're gonna go with whatever really conforms with the town.
Thank you.
Mr. Engel?
I I just wondered, I I I'm thinking about traffic and I'm thinking about parking and I'm thinking that this is one of the most visited stores in the entire downtown. And although it's not the applicant's problem, um it is one of those places where I see a lot of cars parking illegally just to dash in and dash out at his old location. So I'm thinking the new location is probably better for traffic circulation because it can be uh because it's at the intersection and you can basically uh come down Elm and take a left onto South Avenue, or you can come down South Avenue and take a left on Elm. And so there's just gonna be a more complicated traffic pattern. And I just wondered whether we had done any studies as a town or we had any thoughts or perspective on how the traffic patterns are gonna change. I just suspect we're going to see a lot more cars coming um from two different directions to Dunkin' Donuts instead of one as a result of this move. And I'm also wondering where the dumpster is, cause I know that in the old, the last two locations, there was a dumpster in the alley. And I just wonder where the dumpster is gonna be to service this this business.
What will be, we'll coordinate a private pickup out that back door that is the one that's not accessed by customers. Secondly, because this borders South Avenue, we're excited with the fact that the gas station municipal lot is directly across the street. So we were, we were assuming that that would be take a lot of overflow of the illegal parkers or whoever's doing what and give more access to our shop. If anything, taking some heat off eighty eight, which is all front parking.
Uh, I don't understand the plate, where where the dumpster would be. I didn't know you had space anywhere on the property for a dumpster.
No, it would be, it would be, it'll be a multiple day pickup and they would come by, the the trash would be stored inside and it, they would be six days a week and just come pick it up on a daily basis, right out the back door.
And the back door is on Morse Court?
It's on South Avenue.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Engel, I I think to your point of traffic patterns, I'm sure we have not done any study on this and given that it's a site plan application, um I think it'll be interesting to see what happens. Um, but I think for a site plan application, you know, we just have to wait and see. Anybody else? Okay, so do I have approval, uh do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I'll move to approve.
Reasons, uh, well, site plan applications, uh it adheres to the requirements of site plan.
Right.
Right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I call the question, uh, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Clarence Scornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Paul Connect?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Item number eight seventy two. You're welcome. Upon um I uh item eight seventy two Elm Street. Upon application of Roberto Chipoloni authorized agent for J R Silverberg Realty LLC Owners for a site plan approval of section six twelve to allow restoration of this facade to its original symmetry by duplicating the left side currently Togs to match the right side currently Manfredi with one center door in the retail A zone at seventy two Elm Street. Sir?
Hello, I'm Ron Gishu, architect for Roberto, who's present. And you know, we've got this wonderful building, which uh if you've noticed that Manfredi had taken the right side back in twenty fifteen, which you may remember was H C Reed forever, right? So having um now have the opportunity with Togs has had made plans to move, I guess, around the corner. Uh, Roberto and Manfredi has, with his company Manfredi have elected to uh take their option of the entire space. So thereby doubling his space from twelve hundred square feet to twenty four hundred square feet. So in doing so, we'd like to create, there's a great old photograph, I don't know if Lynn was able to um put it up of of the of the building in nineteen thirty six. Do you have that, Lynn? Sorry. This is a great photo, uh which I think anyone can anyone try seeing anyways, but it's a it shows where, there you go. It's fantastic. So when I got involved with doing the signage uh back in twenty fifteen um as well as some interior modifications, it was clear to me that the original facade was very symmetrical and very beautiful. And at some point, it's not clear because if you look, is it, could you zoom in on that photo at all, just on the building? Is that possible? Just so you can see. Um, yeah, a little, if you can move it to the right a little. Just to show the whole, yeah, just that first, there you go. So it's actually the the Togs window was actually to the left currently. And and at some point in time, the two pilasters on the right of center were removed. And and then the very odd, very modern boxy display was installed. So the idea is we want to bring it back to the original. Restore the pilasters back to the original. Restore the pilasters back to the original locations, put the glass exactly where you see, which is in the same plane as what the window of Tox, it used to be there. So they cut it back and floated it and anyways, and, and also make the front door in the same plane as a little more in keeping with the, uh, with the retail store. Whereas a lot of these old stores have little place to stand out of the rain and get protection. So we'd like to, the proposal we have here today is to basically change all matching glass and, and have it all in the same plane as, as is currently with Tox. All within the same framework of those pilasters. So we have a three-foot center wide door in the center, surrounded by what is gonna be frameless glass. So it'll look like, basically it kind of look like, you know, the whole thing looks like a porch. But a- again, to not become an element itself, just a, just an enclosure of a beautiful, a beautiful entry to, um, what is called the Colonial Building. And I think we've, we were told it was built in like a nineteen twenty-six perhaps, yeah. And at one point, it looks like it was actually the AMP on the left. So that's all we're proposing, not changing. We just actually just want to restore back the original pilasters, install, um, modern day glass, which today has to be bulletproof and, and make it look, uh, as beautiful as I think that photograph looks. Uh, do, would you go into the photos of the, in case you haven't seen, looked lately, that I gave you of eight, of, uh, Manfredi? Just to show you what we're taking out. It shows in the drawing, but that's not, doesn't show you the depth of the photo. It was another photo I sent you, um, Lynn, along with the historic photo. Where you can see all the horizontal lines and the missing pilasters. Perhaps you could just zoom in on the left image? Just to make it a little easier to see. You see how that, that's his current state it's in now. So the right side is just kind of chaos. And, and the plasters are long gone. And it's just such beautiful, um, classic facade that I'd just like to restore it back to that. And, uh, and all we're doing actually is just shifting the same, correct me if I'm wrong, Roberto. Uh, we're taking the same signage which we had approved back then and just sliding it to the center of the building. We're using it. So, that's kind of all.
Excellent. Uh, questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Bash?
Uh, I believe it pays, uh, homage to, uh, historic New Canaan in a very attractive way incorporating classical architecture that's in sync with much of the rest of downtown. And, uh, I think it certainly enhances the attractiveness of, of downtown, uh, as well.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to add that, uh, the, excuse me, the proposed design is in keeping with our downtown village design guidelines. And, uh, the historical aspect of this renovation, um, it's, uh, it's beautiful.
Yeah, I think it's really cool. Well done.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'll call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Clara Tescornia?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
John Angle?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Falcon Act?
Yes.
Okay, super, um. Lynn, um, no one is here from three seventy-seven North Wilton, right? Okay, I was gonna bring it forward if anybody was, but if there's not, then we can just go. Okay, um. And is anybody here, or is it just you on Burtus? Did you want Ms. Kaufman to speak? Okay. Because I think the patio, maybe with the patio is, is quick or it may not be, so. I'm making Mr. Root's day. Is Ms. Kaufman, uh, is she available?
I'm here. How are you today?
Okay, good. Ms. Kaufman, uh, Burtus Avenue. For yours.
Oh, good evening. Uh, thank you very much. My name is Jackie Kaufman. I'm an attorney with Carmody Torrance Sandak in Hennessy. I represent the owners of, uh, Burtus Avenue and Cherry Street, uh, the corner property. And we recently filed an application with the Commission in May, uh, to request site plan and special permit approval. And this application includes, um, it includes a request under the new inclusionary zoning under seven point six to include, uh, the affordable units on the property. And I had provided to, uh, to Ms. Brooksovny, uh, the breakdown that's included in the application and that, uh, which you may have before you or which may be appropriate, if you'd like me to share it on the screen. Uh, but the, uh, the nu- the number crunching is, uh, is, is not necessarily relevant tonight, but I'm looking for clarification, please, to section seven point six specifically regarding how the bonus opportunities apply where a fractional unit is also proposed. So the fifteen percent would require a, a three, uh, and a fractional amount. And under seven, uh, seven, six, three, I'm sorry, I just don't have that up on my screen. Bear with me one moment. Uh, under your regulation, I just was emailing this Lynn about this earlier. I want to have the actual reference here for you.
It's seven six.
Oh, yes, under seven, six, C three, there is an opportunity to pay a fractional amount, uh, to, uh, to the town to meet your fifteen percent. However, it's not clear if paying that fractional amount enables the bonus opportunities or whether that fractional amount needs to be rounded up to the nearest whole number and then therefore the unit provided on site to trigger the bonus amenities. And that's under the subsequent two sections, D and E. And so I'm interested to know that we've provided those calculations as part of our application. Happy to pull those up or to go over those with you now. But conceptually, I'm interested in, in knowing what your interpretation of your regulation is, since, uh, we don't have a basis of comparison yet. I think this will be the first time that it is, uh, applied and enabled.
Um, question for Planner Avni, what's your view?
Um. From, from my perspective, um, from my perspective, uh, it, and my, my remembering of what we were, when we discussed it, um, the fractional, the fractional amount we paid, can you hear me? Can be paid as a fee in lieu and that, that would be the intent, that you wouldn't be forced to, um, round up in order for it to be, in order for the bonuses to be enabled. But you would have, i- in this case, I believe the number was three point two two units is what it breaks down to based on their calculations. Um, and then they would want to pay the point two two percent to point, point, a point two two in as a fee in lieu and build the three affordable units on site. And the question is whether or not it, because we didn't explicitly state that it, that, that it, we require that, um, the fractional unit be rounded up to be counted, um, to sort of trigger the bonuses. The, um, attorney Kaufman wants clarification to make sure that if she builds three affordable units on site and pays the point two two to fee in lieu, the bonuses would still.
And, and your, your, your view is if you pay the fraction, you get the bonus?
Yes, she's building three units on site and the point two two would be paid as a fractional amount into the housing fund.
Right, Commissioners, thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, have, have we run this by, uh, Town Attorney for their view on this at all?
Planner Avni?
We did not.
My, my guess will, is that they will say that's up to the interpretation of the commission that wrote the regu- the, the regulation.
Commissioners, I remember, since I think I was the person who was, uh, I think you and I were discussing the, uh, at the time, um, the fee in lieu issue and that if you have a whole unit, let's say it's twenty percent, so you have five units. Obviously, you just one whole unit. It's very simple. If you have a frac- if six units being built, then there's a fractional. And people may want to move up to the, let's say, uh, some numbers that they don't hit the break points. They don't have to build a unit and that the fee in lieu was supposed to be the economic equivalent of a unit, whatever fraction that was, depending on the math. And so my own sense is that it's the moral equivalent of a unit, because they're paying the fee and that we should treat it as such.
Okay.
So it's either.
So you, you agree with Planner Avni?
Yes, I would agree.
Does anybody disagree?
No, and I'll just add that as basically the author of this piece of, um, regulation that that was also my intent, as long as the town is made whole, either through the construction of the units or through the payment of partial units or entire units that, that the bonuses would still apply.
Okay, now, thinking about your question, Mr. Chris, about the lawyers, you know, I'm sure the lawyers would probably, I think we can go ahead and make an interpretation.
Okay.
That said, I think, you know, it should go on our item to, you know, at the right time clarify the language. And that's probably what the lawyers would say, uh, so.
It's a very good idea, Mr. Chairman. So is everybody with this?
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Angle in Zoom land. I'm wondering how the fee is arrived at? Is it, uh, based on the actual cost to create units of affordable housing? Because I have some experience with what it costs to create a unit of affordable housing. Our recent experience has shown us how difficult it is to get an interpretation from the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut is not nearly so lenient and, uh, relaxed about this whole subject of affordable housing and meeting moratoriums. So I just want to understand, are we in any danger? And I'm not worried about the current application, but, uh, as a habit, are we in any danger of getting further away from our moratoriums, further away from our strategy? If we accept the current fee in lieu and the fees are not enough? I know that was a mouthful, but I'm just wondering, what is the state's interpretation of this if we get close but aren't quite there? I would imagine that the state would say tough.
I, I guess I'm confused about your question, Mr. Angle. Are you talking about?
I'm wondering how much, how much is point two two of an affordable housing fee?
So it, that does not, oh, you mean, what does it come to in numbers?
Yeah.
Um, so according to the regulation, uh, you would pay a one-time cash payment equal to three hundred percent of the state median income for a family of four per unit. So you're taking point two two times three hundred percent of the state median income for a family of four. And we had a lot of conversations about that at the time that we were working on this regulation, because it's obviously a inexact calculation, um, but this, I think, was my reflection, what Darian does or something similar. And so we were kind of just doing what someone else, following someone else's lead. And, um, it's on the list of things to reconsider over time if this calculation turns out to not bring in the type of money that we need to build actual units.
Mister, Commissioner, Commissioner Angle, just in, in the background, is that, uh, as Commissioner Nielsen mentions, uh, properly, uh, there was significant discussion on exactly where to stick the pin in the number as far as fee in lieu. Uh, and, uh, there was commentary, uh, at that time, that, that number will probably have to be reevaluated at some point in the, in the future. And I'm sure this commission will, um, you know, catch that falling flag and, and do what's right as, as things develop. Uh, but that was the idea. The reason for the fee in lieu is that there had been talk that you could do it in lieu only.
Thank you so much for all your help all these years.
Yeah. Can we mute Zoom land except for Mr.?
Have, have anybody out in Zoom land, please mute yourselves, please?
He's, if memory serves, there had been discussion of whether one could do just a fee in lieu. And we said that's not appropriate. We want a unit of real housing. And that, uh, we, we decided that twenty percent was the appropriate number for five or more. So we didn't want someone to say, well, I'm gonna just build nine units, because if I hit ten, then I have to build two units. And if I build nine, I only need to build one. So we wanted to make them indifferent regarding the number of units from an economic perspective as best we could. So if it's not a whole unit, you have to do the pro-rata level, uh, for the partial unit to sort of make them economically indifferent regarding the number of units built. That was the concept, if memory serves, on how we did all this.
I'm still confused as to, uh, exactly how much is it worth? And I'm not sure anybody on this commission could tell me what point two two, even in round numbers, means. And I'm not sure that we have a strategy as a town, how, how to employ this fee. I know that we don't have a strategy as a town on fee in lieu of parking to buy more parking or create more parking, and it's never been enough, the, the fees we've gotten. I'm worried that we're gonna go down that road again. Having talked to our housing authority and knowing that historically it costs about four hundred thousand dollars for him to create a unit of affordable housing in the last couple of projects. I'm just wondering if we're where, wh- where this fee would stand. And I'd just like to know it within, say, twenty-five thousand dollars or fifty, within fifty thousand dollars. Does anybody know what this fee would be?
Mr. Angle, I, I would have to respectfully disagree with you. I think we do know. I did make a spreadsheet at the time that we wrote this regulation. I do not have that in front of me tonight, but I'd be happy to provide, Ms. Avni was that, with the answer to the question of what exactly point two two of a unit at this calculation comes to. I think it's, obviously there is a number. I just don't have it in front of me. And also, we've worked with, um, the housing authority at the time that we were coming up with this number, being well aware of what it is costing them to build the units. So this is not a number we just arbitrarily chose. Like I said, it's something that we based upon other towns' regulations and conversations with our own housing authority.
I'm not saying it was chosen arbitrarily. I'm just asking what it was.
Yeah, so.
But what I heard was median income, and I, I don't understand what it is based on that.
Excuse me, Mr.
Or four percent family, I think state median income is probably a little over a hundred thousand dollars.
So. So last year in twenty.
Hundred percent of that times point two two. Get your number. Sorry, Lynn.
No, that's okay. You're the commissioner. Um, so, um, you are correct. The state median income number is gonna change annually. Last year in twenty twenty-one, the, um, state median income was a hundred and two six. Um, this year it came out in April and it's a hundred and sixteen thousand, so the number is going up. So this is, this number is gonna, the, the amount they're gonna pay as a fee in lieu is going to change with respect to the, that year's calculation of what the, um, state median income is and what their fractional amount is.
So my simple math says it's about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if it's three times. Okay, round numbers, so take twenty-two percent of that. That's your number, okay, seventy-six and change, round numbers.
Seventy-six, roughly.
Yeah, thousand. That, the, the money, um, Commissioner Nielsen, correcting, from my understanding is the money goes directly to the housing fund and can only be used for, um, building of new affordable housing or renovation of current affordable housing. That's, that's it.
Correct.
Construction, rehabilitation, repair.
Affordable house.
Of affordable housing. That's it. That's all it can be used for.
Okay, I, I'm satisfied. I think that's a very specific number. That's even more specific than I was looking for. I just think I, I needed to understand, and I needed it to be articulated in front of the public in a public sort of way that, you know, that we had gone through that math. So I, I was unaware of the spreadsheets or, but I think that's a very specific number and I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Angle, I, I will add, not to, not to beat this to death, but, um, we spent over a year working on these regulations, all of which, and we took public input multiple times. So I mean, we do have a challenge, is the public doesn't listen to our meetings unless something hits the fan. Um, but we did a hell of a lot of work on this.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is Jackie Kaufman again, and, uh, I just want to confirm that my rough math, using the, uh, the, the amount from last year, the one oh two six, that's the eighty percent state median for a family of four, uh, produced roughly, uh, you know, at the time, three point two two times the one oh two six times three hundred come out to roughly sixty-eight thousand dollars. That's rounding, um, for this particular unit. Now, that's not, I, I will work with, uh, Ms. Brooksavie. I would like to have that number when we come to you uh, with our draft affordability plan, uh, which is a, uh, condition precedent of, uh, of your approval. And so that we are firm on that number. So I will work with her to, uh, to confirm. And so that we are firm on that number. So I will work with her to uh to confirm. Also, the percent state median income that is used in the calculation when we last met earlier. Um, earlier in June, uh, it was questionable because the state's stash, I think, requires the more. Uh, the more stringent percentage according to Ms. Brooks Savi, so we need to confirm uh with her and. With your commission as well, but that is the that is the accurate percentage that we'll be applying here. Because that's also not, that is, the the state median income is is used, but there's, you know, sixty and there's eighty. And I wanted to confirm which percentage the commission. Is looking to apply here.
And you you, I think you have the guidance you needed, correct?
I believe that I do. I just want to confirm it's the eighty percent. That's the number that we just used.
Well, so we we can figure that out after.
We can figure that out together, but uh and I can speak offline, but I I just wanted to want to confirm that I'm coming to you.
Wanted guidance from the commission as to whether or not we would round up. You've got that guidance.
That I have, yes, and I appreciate you adding us to the agenda today. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
And Krista, I mean, correct me if this is wrong, but I don't remember, it could just be, I don't recall. I don't think we. Differentiated between the sixty and eighty percent number in terms of the fee in the.
It does not.
I I don't, don't, I'm just asking Krista, trying to jog my memory.
Right, so we're using three hundred percent of the state median income, so it's not a percentage of it. It would be a hundred percent of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Take the number, multiply by three. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's um. Let's now move on to patios.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Take care. Um, okay, so we left off the patio discussion with um commissioners. Um, you asked um Planner Abney to do some homework. Um, so I thought we could start with Planner Abney um taking us through and you you have her Planner's memo. But Planner Abney, if you want to take us through what you learned, please.
Um, so just briefly last um last month, um, it's probably like four meetings ago at this point. Um, you asked me to go back and uh get. Create a table for you guys so you could see everything a little bit more clearly of what other communities do with respect to setbacks. Um, with respect to patio and also um you asked me to suggest a definition for patio. So in the in the memo um this month, there's a table at the end. We surveyed Westport, Greenwich, Stamford, Wilton, Darian and Weston, um, and we analyzed um when. When a patio or terrace is included in building coverage and when it's allowed to encroach on a setback. Um, overall, it comes down sort of um. Based on the different communities, we have, we define a patio, um, I wrote it in here. We define a patio as an improved or graded area located at grade with no structural supports or roof whose surface is no higher than thirty-six inches above the adjacent grade. And a patio at grade or ground level shall not be deemed to be a structure. Um. Other in in a couple of other communities, they came out with um. Pretty specific definitions of a patio or terrace. Um patio or terrace seems to be interchangeable terms in several communities. But Westport, Weston and Wilton and Greenwich all um. See a patio as an on-grade surface. They don't include anything to um have it. Above grade. We allow for thirty-six inches. Thirty-six inches is equivalent to about three feet, or it is three feet. Um. And uh that would kind of mean it's not at grade, um, sort of goes. Um, sort of creates like a two-level patio. Um, there's, there's two issues going on here with patios. Um. One, we need to clarify the definition of patios with respect to pools um in section three point four. Um, the regulations actually call out that patios um can't be in the setback. Um, nor can mechanical equipment and several other things that the commission um in its wisdom determined um. A while ago that it can't be in the setbacks, but with respect to patios in general, um. What's happening is patios have somehow, um, people have sort of taken it and said, well, since they're not deemed a structure. Then, you know, structures are not permitted in setbacks. Um, so if it's not a structure, it can be in a setback, and what's happening especially on the smaller in-town lots. Is that people are building, are demolishing older homes on those lots, rebuilding newer homes on those lots that are. Bigger, taller, wider, and are taking up more of the space, and then people want to improve their exterior. Of the property and they're building patios and with little room. In their backyard, they're going into their setbacks and building in their setbacks um so as to maximize what they have. Um, this, they're also using impervious surfaces, so um. They are uh it sort of taxing our infrastructure. Um, our current. Uh drainage certification policy requires that um for the smaller lots, half acre or less. When you um reach a threshold of five hundred square feet, you have to. Um, prepare drainage analysis prepared by a Connecticut licensed PE. And um when you do the drainage analysis, if you're increasing the um stormwater runoff off the site. You have to put infrastructure on your property to mitigate that off-site. And what we're seeing is that people are um building just below the threshold, you know, like. Four hundred and ninety-five square feet and then saying you don't need to get a drainage analysis. So one of the recommendations that staff would have. Um, is that we also make a change to to the drainage um policy and require. Um, that especially in the smaller in-town lots, that a drainage analysis is performed specifically with pools. Um, at, but just in general, there needs to be um, you know, drainage analysis. Done uh for for most. Most, if not all of um stuff, all impervious surface that's being added on the smaller lots. So um. Uh, first, I proposed a definition. I proposed just sort of taking out the language that uh. Calls a patio um that allows it to be thirty-six inches above the adjacent grade and um. I recommended that it, a patio has to comply with the accessory setbacks in all the residential zones. So um on this, on the smaller, on the smaller lots in town, um. Like on the B-zone lots, you might, you have a couple of like seventy-five hundred square foot lots, you saw, you could find them along East Maple. Um, and some other areas, Raymond Street, some of Summer Street. Um, some of them are zone B-zone, so in some of those zones, the the setback would be, I believe it comes out to eight feet. But it would still create a, it wouldn't be at the property line. It would still provide some distance. Um, the other suggestion um is in some of the other uh neighbor and communities that we've researched. They have um either a lot coverage in addition to the building coverage um or a land, or they call it a landscape coverage. Which requires a certain percentage of your lot to remain as green space. We already do this um. In um, you you can find it in the uh. In the multifamily zones and the apartment zones, we call out a landscaped area percent of the property that has to remain landscaped. Um, and um, that that was just a suggestion to, you know. Require that we don't end up having a hundred percent impervious lot to lot. Um, down especially, I mean, this is a, this is most critical right now in the smaller lot zones, you know, that's where the conversation is is going.
But Lynn, if. For the smaller lots, we en- enforce the setbacks. Then you wouldn't need the green space provision, or am I?
Correct. You could, I mean, there are multiple ways to accomplish it, but there should be something that separate separates. The patio from the property line. They shouldn't, they shouldn't have the. Patio, because essentially what's gonna happen is if property A has. A patio up against their lot line and their next-door neighbor at property B does the same thing, you're not gonna have anything in between. You might have offense.
Yeah, no, I think we got that. I think that the challenge is, what do we do about these build-outs of smaller lots?
So then how would we?
And just, just so you know, I also have um the town engineers on on. A Zoom call, so um if you want participation with respect to the drainage, she can also participate. We've, we've had discussions about this internally.
Okay.
Um, I'm just trying to. I don't even know where I stand on any of this, but I'm trying to think logistically through how we would. Enforce this. So if I want to build a patio at my house. Whether it's in the setback or not in the setback or anywhere, I don't get a building permit, do I?
No, not currently, but typically we're seeing the patios come through mostly attached to pools these days. And also um lately, when people have been improving their properties with the outdoor um fireplaces, we've seen them. We've seen them with outdoor structures like pergolas, um, and uh there's a couple of like outdoor, I guess. Cabana sort of structures that people have built in town um that are, that don't include. Um, a pool or anything, but it's an outdoor structure. Probably akin to a pergola, but with a permanent top, but open sides, and then they build a patio and an outdoor kitchen. So then we see it for other, it usually triggers the bulk of the time. With respect to other structures that they're putting there that they're adding the patio.
Okay, but if if they're not doing that, then it wouldn't come to town hall at all, which means you wouldn't have any way to regulate.
It wouldn't unless it was um if someone was doing it near wetlands, which we have seen a few that have come to us. Just because they're doing it near wetlands and wetlands have shared it.
Are they getting permits from the building department?
For a patio, um, no, not if it's just um, if they're just putting down like bluestone on a, you know, gravel base at grade. No, they're not.
You're saying they don't need to.
Correct, they haven't gotten, yep. I mean, the the commission could change that if they wanted to and require a permit.
Does the town staffing have the capacity to be reviewing permits for patios all over town? I I have no idea what type of workload that adds or doesn't add.
So the bulk of them that we see come through with other uh outdoor accessory um structures, I mean. Most of them come through with other. Um, other structures, whether they're building it um an accessory dwelling unit or they're building a pool house or there's usually a patio. Um, with the other, with that application, and that's how we see it.
John Cruz, so um, no pergolas, no ramadas. Um. Um, it's anything about permeability, uh, so it could be just. Just a concrete slab.
So most of them are impervious surfaces. Most people are putting down, when they add a patio to their accessory structures, or it's. Typically impervious surface coverage that they're doing.
And the difference between a pool deck and a patio is?
A deck is um a raised structure, support, it's has structural supports and typically.
Pool deck, so for example, you have the pool, then you have the slab around it, that's at grade perhaps, and they just call it a patio.
So.
I worry about the wording on this that uh. How to differentiate between the two.
Wasn't, wasn't a deck was above, was above the ground.
Yeah, but we don't have friendship between a pool deck and a patio, the um. We just call out in um three point four that it's not permitted. It's um three point four. Be um four D, and it basically says um it's for non-illuminated outdoor recreation facility. So this would be a tennis court, a paddle tennis court, a swimming pool or a similar facility. Um, that any swimming pool deck, patio, mechanical equipment, filtration equipment and storage tanks or containers. Shall be visually screened and shall not be located within the yard setback required for accessory buildings. And shall be located more than fifty feet from any public or private roadway or easement. So this language um in some form similar to this has been in the New Canaan zoning regulations, at least since nineteen eighty-two.
Let's say we have a patio and at the edge of it, there's a permanent installation of brick or some such where the built-in summer kitchen is. And I think these are not uncommon, that summer kitchen is within setback. Would would all be allowed along with the patio.
I'm sorry, a kitchen?
Summer kitchen. You see these when you're outdoors and you know, you have.
Outdoor kitchen.
Like built in or like a movable?
So forth, yeah, built, a permanent one. It's not one on wheels, you roll around. Yeah, exactly. I agree.
So if you're building a structure, you can't put the structure in your setback.
Well, it wouldn't be in the setback, but you could do that, that would be allowed. If you wanted to build a. Brick, I don't know, it could be a brick pizza oven or something in your backyard. Or something like that. If it's in the setback, you could.
So we would typically see it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in the setback usually.
Question.
Strangle.
So I'm looking at the table. Thank you for the uh the table at the very end of the Planner's analysis. I thought that was most helpful. And I'm trying to square that with your recommendation, which is, I think, found two pages earlier. I think your recommendation is is two sentences. It basically seeks to continue to. Look at a patio as not coverage, but that a patio has to respect. All the setback requirements as if it was an accessory structure. Is that, is that the change that it now has to respect accessory structure setbacks? That's what's being clarified? Is that most of it?
Correct, and it's also taking out the language that um indicates that a patio could be up to three thirty-six inches above grade.
It's taking out that language. That's your recommendation.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
So Lynn, if that comes out, what what is it then? That is the thirty-six inches up. What what is, what does that become?
It would, it would be under um. A deck, but.
So it would be a deck, uh, no longer it's a patio, but now it would be a deck.
Correct.
Okay.
That's true. Which is structured.
Yeah, got it.
I think also prohibit the um patio from doubling as a sports court, you know, as you have a built-in. Basketball hoop, it would be a structure and therefore. Most things on wheels wouldn't be, would be treated as a structure. I think.
Unless it's permanent.
Yeah, if it's permanent, if it's on wheels and you could roll it away, it wouldn't be. But.
We're we're not gonna regulate basketball hoops.
Sooner or later, people try something creative.
So then we went with with what you recommend on page three of the Planner's memo in terms of a. Change in the definition of patio and saying that patios comply with accessory setbacks. Are you thinking that we deal with the drainage? That the site coverage versus building coverage as a separate issue at a later time, or do you think this? Addresses that and there is no need? That's okay.
So. This would um partially address it, but we would have to also make a change to the um. Drainage policy. So the drainage policy isn't codified in the regs. The existence of the policy is, but the policy itself is um with, was drafted. Um, and amended several times and has come before this commission. But the current, in the current drainage policy, we have a threshold for the half-acre lots or smaller. That once they hit a threshold of five hundred square feet, they have to submit the drainage analysis. And the other part to the recommendation would be to remove that and just require that especially for the smaller lot zones. Um, half acre or less that um any increase in impervious surface would would trigger a drainage analysis. Um, for the larger lot zones, one acre or larger, the threshold is a thousand square feet. Um. And for most of the larger lot zones, um, I mean, we're not seeing the issue as pronounced right now in the large lot zones, but. But I mean, on a four acre lot, um one one assumes that generally there's. Um if they're only increasing a small amount of impervious surface that they can accommodate it. On the property, it's not, it it's not as pronounced an issue as if someone who has a third acre lot. You know, builds out.
So when you look at just that point that for whatever, whatever we wanted to find this a smaller lot. That any increase in impervious coverage would require a drainage analysis, do our comparable towns do something similar?
I'd I'd have to research that, I don't, I don't know.
My concern would be, I don't know how much drainage analysis is, do you have any rough idea?
I don't.
My concern would be those smaller lots, all else being equal, would tend to be people that would be. More economically limited in terms of paying or a drainage analysis with literally any increase in impervious coverage. So it's kind of has this regressive cost to it.
Yes, I mean, I can check and see um some communities um require drainage analysis for everything. We can find out what what other communities do if that is where the commission wants to go.
My concern, because I don't know how much drainage analysis is and whether or not it should be proportionate to the amount of impervious coverage that's. Being instituted rather than just, you know, anything, literally anything. Um so I I don't want to want to make the cost proportionate to what's being added.
You mean the cost that they're paying us to review it or?
Great analysis to be at least somewhat proportionate to the, you know, the amount of impervious coverage that would potentially be added.
Just wait, just clarify for me, the cost that we're charging to review it or the cost that an engineer will charge to create to do it?
The cost that an engineer will charge that resident to do it.
I believe that just um that's just going to be a private engineer and there are going to be different costs to for, there's no standard fee that they charge. Um you can go to engineer A or engineer B and you could probably get a different quote, just like you would quote out, you know, in addition to your house.
Right, so there might not be a standard charge, I again, I just. Wouldn't want to add on additional layer economic cost unless there's a proportionate amount of. Something that it's in terms of our community really causing some detriment. If it's a small amount of impervious coverage and that's one of these smaller lot sizes that you're mentioning. Then it might not be necessary to do drainage analysis, if it's a lot, if it's reaches some. Goes beyond some minimum threshold of impervious coverage that's being added, then maybe the economic burden to those owners of smaller lots. It would be more appropriate for them to pay it at that point.
But I I think we had that with the five hundred square feet and now they're coming in saying, oh, I'll just build four hundred ninety-five square feet so they don't have to pay it. My second point would be, I think a lot of these smaller in town lots are people coming in, tearing down the old house, building a big house and adding. Outdoor kitchens and pools. I, you know, like I see your point, but I don't, I don't think that's the case with what we're looking at now.
Uh see, I'm guessing it's case by case.
I mean, I think if if you're economically limited, you're not putting in a huge patio in your backyard.
Yeah, but I. True, but but if we're talking about any increase in impervious coverage, we're not just talking about, you know. Having all these amenities, but and and you're still having to pay for drainage analysis.
Yeah, but what we were saying is we have a a, what do you call it, like the five hundred square feet? Trigger and people are coming in and they're they're kind of getting around it because they're only putting in four hundred ninety-five square feet.
Lynn, did did you say um engineer Copeland is on the zone?
She is.
Thank you, excuse me, and I had my hand raised, so I'll I'll take that off because I did. One of the things that Lynn had mentioned was the idea of lot coverage in addition to building coverage, and I fully support that concept. Because I believe that even with keeping with the five hundred square foot trigger, that that lot coverage. Um constraint would actually address what our concerns are regarding drainage and that is. Leaving available property, impervious property on the site that could absorb the stormwater runoff. From impervious surfaces and that's what our main goal is, because the reality is is that the limited area within setbacks. Is not sufficient area to address all the stormwater runoffs, especially from some of our larger storm events, so. Abutting neighbors are now getting the stormwater runoff to a greater extent than they ever did. One of the modest changes that we made um in twenty twenty-two, the drainage policy is that we did say that. The calculations for impervious area, whether it be in half acre zone or less or a one acre zone or greater. Um well, they are considered cumulative over a five year period. So what we tried to do is encourage um our residents to come up with a master plan of what they want to do. And what that does is that prohibits what had been done in the past is that, for example, in a small. A smaller property where five hundred square feet added impervious air was the trigger, they come in with a few. Four hundred square foot impervious area projects over. A course of either a year or a couple of years, and what happens is that cumulatively, that causes stress. To our environment and to our infrastructure and to abutting neighbors. So my position is is that addressing lot coverage and adding some sort of. Constraint with that would help. Um significantly address the drainage issue and I believe would actually not need to. Then um trigger any change to the five hundred square foot added impervious area, because I do agree with with the comments that are being raised. It's that that would um do add undue stress to the resident and candidly to our department. As well, because there would be a significant um amount of added permits coming through our office.
Okay, so your view is, I mean, the takeaways are, one, we we do have a real problem.
Correct.
Two is you would you would recommend the commission to focus on have something having to do with lot. Limitations on lot coverage.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I I I thought that that was one of the things that was uh. Going to be addressed, there's a, there's a a ton of work that went in here and appreciate it. But it is is, I believe, Lynn, that was something that was talked about in our last meeting regarding this topic that. Some surrounding towns had some sort of um ratio for the amount of impervious coverage. Um they had, and maybe we can use that as a guideline.
We can, we can do some more research and get some information on. What neighboring towns do. Like I'm not every neighboring town has.
That dimensional reg. But um there are, there are some of the neighboring towns that do have that, and that was one of the things that we. Saw, because that could also accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
Mister Chairman, the the two most important things in my view, one, we already talk about no structural support, so we already that. That box has been checked is the addition that um. Uh a patio show comply with accessory setbacks in our residential zones, because the setback issue is always a sensitive one for this commission and neighbors. And um as our our town engineers mentioned, the issue of runoff is a is a real issue. And the impervious service or covered total coverage, I think is something we need to stick a pin into as well, those would be the two. Two key areas for me, and so one is in the proposed recommendation or definition, but I would think we. I want to think a little more deeply on what we want to do on on coverage issues to deal with with this. So those are my thoughts, Mister Chairman.
If you have a, whatever we might agree to for lot coverage. And if we were to agree to the patio language uh that Lynn has proposed that patio should comply. With accessory setbacks in all residential zones. How does a special permit apply for special situations? Where it might be a become appropriate? To. Have a variation from any of those.
Lynn, did you explore um? A special permit type exception?
I did not. Um, I don't, I don't think we.
I mean, if if you. I mean, do you do you think we should?
We can, I mean, we can go back and look through the files, um because we've called several years worth of files for accessory structures. To sort of get our data. And I don't think we came across one that stands out, but we can go back and look. One that might.
You mean in terms of historic situations, applications?
Yes. We we we, our data for this is we've we've sort of called back through the last four or five years of applications that we've seen. Both on a zoning permit and on special permits and on um zoning variances. That have.
Yeah, couldn't couldn't they always just apply for variance to the ZBA?
Yeah, that's a, isn't that a?
That's that's tough to do. You demonstrate hardship as Mister Angle, Mister Chris will know. Yeah, it with ZBA is different, it has to be something frankly quirky with the land. So for example, it's a, it's a, you know, tenth of an acre lot because. It's a tenth of an acre lot or half of its ledge or half of its wetlands or something, so you have to have something really. Uh peculiar about the property in order to be a valid ZBA issue. If it's that, you know, I just want to do it, uh it's probably not going to get through ZBA. Well, it shouldn't get through a special permit. Permit either, but you know, but for ZBA is that you have to show something that's specific to the property that makes it unusual and so um. You know, some of the ones we had to deal with, for example, that was um, you may be familiar with the um old uh community center on Ponus. They'll chap- chapel it's on less than a tenth of an acre, it's a historic property um and and so forth. And the um zoning board of appeals um permitted it to become a single family residence. As as a variance given that it was a historic property and it's very small lot and it's a hundred years old. So that was the decision there, so there's something very. Yeah, very particular about the lot that that really is driving a decision. Okay, so what I'm hearing so far is we should explore lot coverage. We should consider. Lynn's proposal on patio coverage, is that right? John, that was your take?
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, anything else to take this thing forward? I mean, I would encourage everybody to read Mister Rucci's memo.
Can you say like a couple of things?
I'll give you. I was going to say five, but I'll give you, I'll give you two minutes.
I mean, I I would just say.
Mister Rucci might, you know, to be clear, and you'll know this as a lawyer, is my only concern is other people are not getting a way in, so let's keep this brief.
Yeah, for sure, and and I think my whole purpose, forget about the person that I'm representing, I mean. This is going to be a huge sea change around here, this is not as simple as just, you know, we're not going to, I mean, this all came to you to begin with just. Patios and setbacks, and it was only patio specific to a pool in a setback, had nothing to do with any of these other pedestals. I mean, I can tell you right now, you're going to have forty percent of the properties are going to be out of conformance, just to begin with, I have twenty. Files at my house right now that, I mean, in my office right now that has patios over setbacks, so I'm just saying that like. I understand what you're saying, I think that Maria has a much better idea as far as the lot area coverage. But I would never put, I mean, the patios are not structures, they do not count towards coverage. They may count towards lot area coverage, that's a different thing, because you're talking about an imperv- impervious surface. But I think we have to be really careful about this, I mean, like I said, forget about my one client, I mean, I. Tons of clients that have patios that are over setbacks. And because they're allowed to be over setbacks and and I think that to some of the points, like I don't see any patios that are built. To a property line, to a property line, I mean, I I just don't see that. And my business is neighborhood disputes, I got tons of neighborhood disputes, yes, we have drainage disputes. Okay, that's probably one of that and somebody's light is shining into someone's bedroom, those are the two big disputes I have all the time. But I just think that. All we were really talking about here was whether or not a pool that was attached or detached. Should really be count, should be allowed to go into setback and and I, and while all these other things are important. I think we have to be really careful, I mean, I think we need public comment in all these. Um I do agree with with Maria in the lot area coverage, I think that's a great idea.
Well, well, you know, this this would end up as a regular tour, as an amendment to the regulations and by definition, we would have public comment, you know that.
Yeah, I think for sure, I just wanted, I just think you should be, it should be a little bit more focused, I mean, counting, counting this towards coverage. A patio towards coverage is going to be a huge, I mean, lots in the in these smaller zones, they're going to be all put out of coverage. I mean, they will go over coverage and, you know, I think.
Well, they'll they'll be.
They'll be grandfathered in, but they won't be able to do anything else on their property that maybe they may not have thought they could do.
Right.
So I just think it's. But going to maybe a lot area coverage, you may, you know, because you're going to give them some additional percentages, maybe something better, but there'll be a huge sea change. With some of these, with some of these matters, especially with in town properties. So I I would be concerned if our issue is drainage, which I get. I think you focus on drainage and how you fit it, I don't think it has anything to do with the patio, whether it's right next to the setback or in the setback or not. Unless it's causing some sort of drainage issue, and to Mister Bosch's point. You know, a hundred square feet for for a patio, I mean, you're going to make guys spend five thousand dollars to go and get a drainage study, like that's. Kind of ridiculous. And people who are doing four hundred ninety-five square feet, you know, shame on them, and if they're creating a damage problem with someone else, that neighbor should be suing them. For it, so, you know. I think there's ways around it, I I don't agree with the town planner in changing the patio definition, I don't agree with it counting towards coverage. I think that they should be allowed into the setbacks, provided that they um they do prepare a drainage study. For any patio that goes into a setback, my recommendation in my letter was not that they should be allowed altogether. It was what Darian and uh Wilton does, which allows essentially fifty percent into the setback or. Eight feet or less or something like that, I can't remember exactly what it was, mine was ten feet or less or fifty percent in the setback.
But you're saying a drainage study if it does go into the setback?
If it goes in the setback, they should have a drainage study regardless. Regardless of whether or not it's a patio attached to a pool, detached from a pool, attached to a tennis court, detached, I mean, the funny thing also with D is that. It only relates to pools, the patio, so you can put a patio into the setback that's on a paddle court. So long as it's a grade, but it's just pools, which I, and I'm not sure why that came out like that, but it's just pools that are that way and. And you know, I think Mister Chris brought up last time that, you know, I don't want a neighbor right next to my property and and all that stuff, and I get that. But if you have a pool out there to begin with, it doesn't matter whether you have a patio or not, I mean, you're going to hear that noise, whether there's a patio or not. With the pool, I mean, the pool is going to create, paddle court's going to create, tennis court's going to create, and it doesn't matter whether the patio is, you know, a couple of feet into the setback or not. I mean, that's just practically the way I look at it. So, thank you, that was all I wanted to mention.
You're welcome. Okay, what what's our instructions to Planner Avni? I think definitely lot coverage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should see what neighboring communities do for site coverage in addition to. But I mean, we already have building coverage.
Yeah.
Have coverage, but we should separate building from the site.
And and I would, I would say let's get more input from engineer Copeland. Let's get her guy, she's the expert. So the expert for the town has identified, A, we have a problem, B, let's use her to, you know, think about. What the parameters should be.
Mister Chairman, should we be thinking about or differentiating between permeable paddle patio and a non permeable? Because I know many times with lot coverage, if your. Coverage goes. Over, you 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 take a jackhammer and knock up part of your driveway and you put Belgium block in and now you've met. Now you meet the magic number, and so I would think there's a difference particularly for the um. The drainage issue, whether you have, you know. Slate with gaps in between versus just a slab. Uh one's more permeable and, you know, I certainly would appreciate anything the um uh town engineer has to say on this matter, but we may want to say that. You know, that's a different thing, because we have done that in other cases, just the driveway issue.
Yeah, you're right.
Mister Chairman?
Yeah.
The um engineer would like to speak.
Sure.
Thank you again, because that was a an excellent question that got raised. What our interpretation would be is is that whether it's gravel, whether it's um concrete, it would be considered. Impervious area for the calculations for the definition of lot coverage. But to that end, you can use permeable pavers, permeable pavement. As a mitigate, a stormwater mitigation measure, it just has to be designed. According to the acceptable standards and guidelines, which traditionally is a deeper reservoir course, which means a deeper cross section of stone. And that allows for the water to have an area to safely go without um causing surface runoff. But ultimately would infiltrate into the ground over time. But ultimately would infiltrate into the ground over time.
Okay, let's what? I'll say for the third time, we got, we have to start exploring the lot coverage issue. We all agree on that. And then two is um. Let's reread uh Mister Rucci's memo. Um let's think about that issue more. I guess the que- and I'm not sure what the answer is, is you know, the other question though is if you do have somebody in town. They're in a small lot. And they are building to the fence, so to speak, you know, is that something? But I guess we fall back on.
Setbacks.
On the setback, yeah.
I mean, if Darian, it's what you can build, you know, patio can go to within eight feet. Like the lot line. Wonder what kind of issues that has created for Darian. Maybe that works just fine.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, you know, Mr. Rucci is saying, well, you have to, if it goes in the setback, you have to do a drainage study, so that that's the drainage issue, but still there's, it's the build-out issue. And is that something we should worry about or not?
Yeah, and just to tag on, I mean, I know I said this before, I'm still just struggling with. There's there's, is it the right thing to do to try to regulate things and setbacks? And it may be. But do we have the capacity to enforce it? I'm not sure. So is there any point to doing it? If we don't actually have the capacity to enforce it? You know, I'm not, I don't know.
Well, the drainage is a huge issue.
Yeah, no, I think the drainage piece can be regulated. It's more to me, the the patios and the setback part that I think is going to be harder. To enforce. And but maybe we accomplish what we want to accomplish with site coverage as opposed to getting into. Patios and setbacks.
Think this is the type of issue so nuanced that. It's going to be very difficult for kind of us to decide to decide some of these things in a vacuum. So to the extent that we can look at. Surrounding towns that are most comparable to us, especially, you know, addressing the specific issue. And just use them as comp, I would assume in terms of, you know, their. Level of support um from engineers or public works that it's going to be pretty comparable to us. And um you know, to the extent that that maybe, you know, you consult with a couple other town planners on this, you know, that could kind of reinforce that. Basically, what I'm saying is, I think this is something where we should really take guidance from some surrounding comparable towns and kind of take the lead from them. And then. Our our. A real world experience will prove out whether or not we need to make refinements at that point, but I think we can use that as kind of a guidepost.
Well, then maybe in talking to them, Lynn, I mean, if you do actually have phone conversations with people or email them. Figure out how how do they enforce it? I mean, obviously, if something comes through for special permit or site plan approval or even a building permit approval. The town gets eyes on it, but if it's not coming through any of those pathways, I'm assuming. The town, other towns are going to have the same issue.
Yeah, um we do, we do get um. Just call all the time.
Then microphone.
Ne- neighbors do call all the time when there's construction next door and they don't know what's going on because. Their neighbors didn't talk to each other, so we get calls all the time, like, did my neighbor pull a permit for this or that? And uh that's often how we find the ones that are unpermitted.
Yeah, I I have to be careful how I say this, but. You know, look, there is some fast and loose stuff going on. And so, you know, you can say, well, we don't have the ability to enforce things, so we're going to back off and that'll that potentially could promote some. Additional not great behavior. You're damned if you do, damned if you don't. Well, Lynn, you I mean, look, Lynn, you you are. Regularly talking to planners in other towns. I mean, Lynn is not, you know, doing this job in a vacuum. There there is an ongoing information flow, but. So. Let's just, let's think more about this. Um let's sort of brains, you know, think more about. Some of the issues we discussed, the all of, you know, I'm talking all of the commissioners. And um let's reread Mister Rucci's memo. And. You know, and then the other thing is we agree we need to get going on addressing the lock coverage issue. Okay, everybody good? Okay, I'm going to bring it home now. We're going to be very efficient from here on in. Now now that Mister Rucci is no longer opining. Have a good night, miss. Have a good night, Mister Rucci. Um, okay, um. Three seventy-seven North Wilton Road, Lynn, this looks like um the standard stuff that they do. Is there anything out of the ordinary with Saint Luke's and and their request here?
No, you are correct. It is um their ordinary seasonal um request regarding their field usage. In this case, they're uh they've got tennis clinics, lacrosse clinics and soccer clinics going on.
Wasn't there a neighbor that? Made a recommendation to move the. Activity to another part of the campus.
That was at the country school. That was country school. Different school.
Okay, do I have motion for approval or denial of uh section C? Item C, sorry. Don't worry, I'm not going to ask you for a reason for approval. Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
There's a Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
John Engel.
Yes.
Bash. Walkenag.
Yes.
Okay, item ten approval of the minutes, May twenty. Pardon?
Who who was the second on that? Oh, sorry.
Trying to bring this home, Lynn. Okay, May twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. Everybody comfortable with those? Okay, do I motion for approval or denial? Second.
Second.
That was Turner and to Scornia. Good when I vote, yes, Mister Turner.
Yes.
Mister Ward.
Yes.
Mister Chris.
Yes.
Mister Scornia. Ms. Nielsen.
Yes.
Mister Engel.
Yes.
Mister Bash.
Yes.
Mister Connect.
Yes.
Okay, B, June sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, special meeting minutes, um. I motion for approval or denial? And Mister Ward, do I have a second? Yeah, second. Okay, that was Ward and Bash. Uh. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
There's Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
John Engel. John Engel.
Yes. Yes.
Uh James Bash.
Yes.
Paul Connect.
Yes.
Okay, meetings adjourned. Everybody uh have a great night and happy Fourth of July, everybody.